Is everyone here? Tell me what happened. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order of the regular City Commission meeting Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner who that?
Here.
Commissioner Farnes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Preston.
Here.
Mary Vance.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silence. With allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please have approval of the City Commission meeting minutes for the regular City Commission meeting of December 7th, 2021?
Would you approve?
Second, motion by Commissioner Farnes, second by Vice Mayor Preston, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Acknowledgement of our City Board meeting minutes of planning and zoning board of November 4th, 2021, community appearance board meeting of October 13th, 2021, and community redevelopment meeting October 12th, 2021.
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Farnes, Vice Mayor Preston, second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 As opposed? Approval of our agenda for January 4th, 2022.
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Pass this down.
Remembered on the public mission to the like on experience. Three minutes will be provided, however, on additional minutes, therefore, to other events. Anyone connected online in phone video must however announce at the bottom of the screen and click on his first step. On the like that breaks hand will be recognized by your profile and your audio opening and description. Those participants and moments are going on, thou star nine twenty. Will be recognized by the last three digits of your number, may thou star six, sound if necessary.
Thank you. Our very first item is a certificate of appreciation to Joel Smith, the Executive Director of Deerfield Beach Community Cares. Is Joel here, Tom?
Joel, there you are. Joel Smith, and former director of the Florida Initiative for Suicide Prevention, brought to the city of Beach, the city of Deerfield Beach, after two teenagers ended their lives standing in front of trains. In September, Joel established Deerfield Beach Community Cares as a not-for-profit corporation geared towards bringing awareness to the importance of mental health in the city. Joel is always out in the community connecting resources to promote mental health awareness. Joel has and will continue to promote mental health awareness in city lectures, focus groups, and health fairs here in the city. Joel, we want to thank you very much for all of your efforts here in the city of Deerfield Beach, your hard work, your dedication, everything that you've done to bring awareness to mental health in the city. And we want to thank you for creating an oasis of health in both your mercy. You'd like to present your.
Well, I think the City Commission, city of Deerfield Beach for welcoming Deerfield Beach Community Cares for making a major effort to help people identify where they are on the air for wellness, and then help them reach out and get the supports they need to do so. Our phrase, "If you find to your mind," I have stickers for people that they invited tonight, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel.
This is a certificate of recognition. This is one of those things where we're happy and yet very sad at the same time. I think Alfred's probably more happy than we are, but I can tell you this. This certificate of recognition is presented to Alfred Richardson for dedication to the city of Deerfield Beach for the past thirty years of service. Alfred started working for the city in 1991 as a driver collector for the Department of Sustainable Management. Alfred has been a hardworking employee that has always put the residents and his team's best interest in front of himself, and it's always taken his heart. Alfred always displayed his friendly personality with everyone who encountered and provided outstanding service in the past thirty years in the city of Deerfield Beach. On behalf of the city of Deerfield Beach, on your retirement, Alfred, we thank you for your years of service, your dedication, and just for being a fantastic person. We'd like to present this to you.
Like to give an opportunity, certainly, to say that it was a great ride, so, you know, drag, I got to me, and I truly enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred.
And you know, it says something about how great of an employer it is when you've got some of his team workers here to see him off. Congratulations, though. Hey, guys, again. Our next item, well, this is a long one. Narrator was written, I believe, by Cindy War and Peace, but it's well worthy of it. And I do want to make sure that Vice Mayor Preston speaks on this as well. Second only to accidents, suicides, the leading cause of death for persons fifteen to twenty-four years of age. For the more suicide continues to plague our youth in Ralph Broward County, State of Florida. During a recent event in one of our city facilities, city staff realized the presence of a youth who was unfamiliar to them. In an attempt to welcome the newcomer, staff introduced themselves and began to recognize signs of trouble. They used exhibits of characteristics of being in emotional distress. Staff became concerned with the well-being of this individual. While they continued to be compassionate and attentive, staff members were also able to elicit, recognize warrants, warning signs of self-harm, so they recruited the assistance of a third staff member, hoping to further ease the youth's concerns and make them more comfortable discussing personal issues. As the staff continued to develop a forward routine realizing seriousness of the situation, one of them momentarily stepped away and notified their supervisor to get further assistance. Supervisor who across the city, working on a major upcoming event, became immediately concerned. Recognizing the urgency, dropped everything, and after getting sufficient information, contacted BSO committee, who quickly sent two deputies to the location. City staff in such a short amount of time were able to garner enough confidence from that youth that when BSO arrived, deputies were able to seamlessly conduct their own independent investigation. Based on their findings, deputies also determined that this was a serious life-threatening emergency, and were able to get the youth needed intervention with health care professionals. The youth encouraged by the compassion and the care of the city staff were receptive to this life-saving intervention. A few weeks later, city staff and deputies were able to follow up and reunite the team who has become very engaged in variety events that have a positive impact and positively impacted other youth and various members of the community. Relationships have also been built for these families who are grateful for everyone's efforts. The compassion, diligence, tenderness, quick thinking by staff and BSO are to be commended, as well as the seamless and cooperative nature of how BSO integratively works with our city staff. These stories don't always turn out this good, so I want to thank our staff members and BSO for all of their hard work in doing this. Vice Mayor Preston, would you like to say a few words before I announce the names?
It's so important that when all of you hear something of this nature, what the mayor just read is the very nice crafted side of it, but what's the reality? Reality is, had staff not acted, had BSO not acted, you would be reading about a tragedy. You know what Alfred said? Must we see a tragedy of one of our young ones that, you know, that we lose? Well, what could have been done? Why didn't anybody do anything? That's all after the fact. The fact is that they noticed something at a very crucial time and decided to act on it. This is not good. This is outstanding. And if you don't know about it, you know, it just passes by. You need to know. You need to know what your staff is doing in the city of Deerfield Beach. You need to know how BSO is assisting and responding in issues like this. So what this is, is that people who care, people who prevented a tragedy. And you know, the award that they get tonight, it's only a small token. It's a piece of paper. But what's the reality? The reality is their hearts was in the right place. The reality is they care. The reality is that they showed passion. And for that, a human being was able to enjoy Christmas, was able to go into the New Year, and that person was breathing. That's the reality. And so I am so very proud of our staff who didn't let this become a tragedy. And I'm also equally as proud of BSO who just, you know, cared and acted. And because they worked together, the outcome, as the mayor said, is great. I was over at Obeed and Heath and doing the holidays and doing, you know, the Santa time. And one of BSO's officers, one of their female officers, was sitting there talking to these girls on the bench. And I just, it just really touched me because, you know, that's a very challenged area. And the BSO officer, she was just sitting there talking to these young girls. And it was so beautiful, like, girls being girls, you know, and I just said, you know, that's what it's all about, people's care, people that really actually care. And that's how we make a difference. So for that, I'm very, very happy. Congratulations. Thank you.
On behalf of the city of Deerfield Beach for your compassion, your tenderness, and your decisiveness demonstrated by your life-saving actions during this critical event, your outstanding efforts are appreciated and commended. We'd like to recognize Anthony Carter, Dale Williams, Elizabeth Reche, Lou Stierasone, Deputy Caitlin Spear, and Deputy Ariel Soms.
Okay, item number four on tonight's agenda is ordinance, is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 98, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Zoning District Regulations, Section 98-59 S Open Space of the City of Deerfield Beach Land Development Code to provide for beach chair and umbrella setups as an accessory use to a beach use in the S Open Space zoning district, subject to conditions, providing for conflicts, separability, codification, and an effective date. This is second reading. I did give a detailed overview of this ordinance on first reading, and I'm available to answer any questions that the commission may have on this.
Commission, you have any questions? I'd say anyone from the public would care, comment on the side. Yes. Name and address for the rest, please.
Good evening. Could you, uh, in the, uh, Tuesday, and I think so, this is the second straight. On the beach, by the pier. Again, it's going to show us. Last week, you showed, that's not to show support, you know, for what we wanted to do, but I want you to clarify some of the comments that were made. We are not here to kick the public out of the beach. We, you know, six to seven months out of the year, we rely on the local community to survive. And we are not planning on doing anything less or more than what the city is currently doing. Without the support of the locals, supporting our restaurants, and also our best friends during the season. This is what I would not do, and it isn't a success. But very respectful of the constituents and very respectful of the people who live here. And we just want to offer a better service to our guests.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on the side? Not seeing anyone written in, number. Okay, I'm going closer to the public. Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mayor. I can count the math from first reading, how this is going to go, but I still think this is a mistake in as much as it has nothing to do with the Wyndham and there being a great community partner to us in the city of Deerfield Beach. But when we craft an ordinance tailored specifically to one business that affects the entire beach area or the entire zoning district, I think it just sets a bad precedent. And that's where I have the hangup. Nothing against the Wyndham, but again, I have, I have issues and problems with it, and I'm still a no vote. But I just wanted to relay those concerns on the record tonight.
Thank you. You would also, Commissioner, but Commissioner Farnes.
Yes. Private owners can do pretty much what they want with their property. We had somebody who had a trailer on the beach, they owned a beach property. We fought with them for years, and so we finally bought them out and got it removed. The Wyndham has proved to be an excellent corporate partner to us and to the city of Deerfield Beach. What do they want to do? They want to give their guests chairs and umbrellas as part of their state and an amenity for being a guest at their hotel. The alternative is you hire a company or give a property a contract to sell those guests umbrellas and chairs, which I think is not right. Next, are we going to tell them you can't give them a free cocktail with dinner because somebody else does do it? No. This is their property. They've always opened that property to the city residents or guests who visit the beach. And if you want to get a free umbrella and chair, all you got to do is check into the hotel. You don't want to check into the hotel that rented from whoever has the contract for umbrellas and chairs. They're adding it to an amenity, just like a free buffet on Friday night to their guests. Are we going to restrict that too because it might hurt a restaurant? Of course not. I support this because I feel it's, they've been great partners to us and to the residents and guests of Deerfield Beach and the use of their beach that they own as if it belonged to the city. What are they really asking for? To allow their guests to have an amenity. I support this wholeheartedly, and I'm asking my fellow commissioners to do the same.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will say this. I agree with Commissioner Drosky in the fact that we shouldn't be crafting ordinances that affect the entire city just for specific situations in general. But I also think that we need to have the flexibility, if you have a unique situation, to put ordinances in place to resolve issues that come up. I don't think this is narrowly pointed in that direction that it causes an adverse effect to the rest of the city. I think it makes sense. I do support it. You know, we don't do spot zoning for a reason. That's something we don't. But we do make ordinances in time to try to alleviate and provide some relief in situations where it's needed. So I support this, and I hopefully would have a motion here. Commissioner who that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also understand Commissioner Drosky's point of view. I do. But one of the things that I'm most proud of with this commission is our ability to look, to have foresight, to see that if we don't put something in place now, that there are potential avenues of contention in the future. And that's what this ordinance is doing. Because if we don't do something now, yes, Wyndham has been a tremendous, tremendous partner for the city. But who knows what happens in the future? So by putting something in place now, we're, we're, we're looking forward into the future to prevent any kind of future, you know, disputes between the two entities. And so therefore, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. Thank you.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner who that, second by Commissioner Farnes. Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
No.
Commissioner who that?
Yes.
Commissioner Farnes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mary Vance?
Yes.
Item number five, that's ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 34, Environment, Article 4, Outdoor Lighting Restrictions, Section 34-60, Beach Area Outdoor Lighting Restrictions in Chapter 46, Offences, Section 46-31, Open Burning of the City Code of Ordinances to Incorporate the State of Florida Model C Turtle Lighting Requirements, Providing for Codification, Separability, Conflict, and an Effective Date. This is second reading.
Is there anyone from the public who care, comment on the side? Number, first, is anyone written in? Not seeing anyone. I'm going closer to public commission.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Preston, second by Commissioner Farnes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, both. Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 98, Land Development Regulations, Article 4, Supplementary Regulations, Section 98-3, Definitions of the City Land Development Code to Add Definitions Related to Docking and Moring Facilities, Amending Section 98-87, Docking and Moring Facilities, to amend the city's docking and moring facilities regulations, providing for codification, separability, conflicts, and effective dates. Second reading.
Commissioner, you have any comments for the public?
I would just ask staff to define to the public what this really is about. About docking and moring, using terms that a lot of people don't know, to define that for the public. Wait a minute.
Vice Mayor, I believe I have Mr. Power on through Zoom this evening who can, who can address this. He does have a, he can explain that. Additionally, he could present the presentation he did last time, if he wants to see that as well. Mr. Power.
All right. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Eric Power, Director of Plan and Development Services. Commissioner Preston, I apologize. I didn't hear the full question.
I just would like for you to define to the public, when you refer to docking and moring, what does that really mean? Because a lot of people would read this and not know what that means.
Docking and moring refers to the, look, the storage of personal watercraft, whether it's residential or commercial and marina, and the regulations that come to it regarding setbacks and necessary clearances between adjacent properties and the waterway itself, so that everyone has full access to intercoastal areas, canals, and such forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who care, comment on the side? Not seeing any. I'm going to go closer to the public. Okay. Close to the public commission.
Would you approve?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Farnes, second by Commissioner who that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass this again.
We're now at the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Person's addressing the commission, so state his or her name and address. It may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. This is the time of tonight's meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you have comment on items that are on the agenda, the time to do that is when the agenda item is called and the public comment period is open. And as a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which defend persons' ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
I'm perceiving the agreement. Anyone here in the chamber who'd like to speak?
Yes.
Happy New Year, everyone. My name's William Lane, and I live at 11 Guilford A in Deerfield Beach in Century Village. Last month, we brought up this, we guys brought up the subject, but speeders in Deerfield Beach. And I'd like to talk a little bit about speeders in Deerfield Beach exclusively in Century Village. For years now, and I've been a resident there for six years. I'm the president of two associations. In Century Village, there's about twenty-four miles of road. And about four, five miles of that is twenty-five miles an hour. Well, I don't even want to talk about that because most people don't drive twenty-five miles an hour. And that's just a normal thing in the village. But inside the buildings, the speed limit is fifteen miles an hour. And where I am in Guilford A, we have a Speedway. We have about a half a mile after you make a turn that goes straight and past Guilford into Benton or and we've had a speed gun out there a couple of times. We clocked people at fifty miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour, forty miles an hour. Now, over the years, the BSO weren't in Village, but they are now because we spent $330,000 on signage and walkways. And I'm not saying it didn't help. What it did do is it put up more stop signs and people just drive through. Now, I know there's been a lot of tickets written on, I don't know the exact number, but I know that at the last meeting, I don't know if it was captain of BSOs here, and he talked about nine thousand tickets at Deerfield Beach last year and almost sixteen thousand or more this year. Well, I spoke with a few officers who do patrol, not a lot, but they do patrol the entrance of Century Village. And I asked them about speeders. And three people that I did talk to, officers, they said, yeah, we've warned a lot of people. Well, warning, warning is a warning. Warning is is a warning, but. We've published for the last five years a reporter, which is a uh paper that goes out once a month in the village.
She like one more moment?
Yeah, please.
Might want to get to you.
Yeah, but uh. And you know, it's time to start passing out tickets. Today, friends of mine were leaving. They were here for food in New York, and we were. Standing on the side and they were putting their luggage in their car. They were they were leaving. And someone advised about fifteen miles an hour. I mean, it was it was crazy after rolling through uh the stop sign. So I think it's time for more tickets, especially in areas where it's fifteen miles an hour. It's it's horrendous. I could go on and on and on because I see it every day and uh. I think we need some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Michael Lombardi, you have your members.
Good evening, city officials, and happy new year. My name is Michael Lombardi. I live at four thirty-one Southeast Third Place in Deerfield Beach. Uh I'd just like to echo what the previous gentleman stated about speeders. Uh the neighborhood that I live in has some streets that have speed bumps on it and some streets that don't, excuse me, that don't. My street is one of them. Uh I do notice uh an increased number of cars that do speed excessively through these. Neighborhoods that have small children in them, and I know that there's small children in there because many houses have those little. Green kid signs that have the little red flags that stick out to indicate that there's children around. Uh I'm a new parent myself, and I do have a similar concern of speeders in this neighborhood. So I'd like to speak with somebody from city staff or representative and and go over. I noticed that there's new speed bumps that get put in in other areas. And I'm just wondering if I could meet with somebody from city staff or or representative to discuss uh this matter in more detail. Uh because I don't think three minutes with an extension of one minute is plenty of time to to adequately speak on it. So thank you.
Um we'll have someone to invest your work. Make sure we get your contact.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public care to speak? You want us?
Hello, my name is Paula Cook, and I uh live at sixty-two Centennial Court in Deerfield Beach.
Bring the mic down.
My question is, I was reading in the Pelican that our districts were changed, were they? Was that I'm mistaken? They were one, two, three, four, were all different.
But we'll give you an answer when you're done. Yeah, there was a recent county commission change. But uh each few years, when when there's election that comes up, that's when the districts change.
Okay, because I was just wondering if they uh what they would do to our precincts. Or county precincts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else from the public? I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public. Commissioner Parnas, do you want to comment?
Yes, Billy. You have private streets until. You can get fifty percent, the unit owners. Sign a form with the city to ask for speed bumps. City can't put it on private roads, but they can help you with the company that puts them in for the city. And there's nothing wrong with your putting in speed bumps. They make them today. Let me finish. So then fire trucks and ambulances don't have to slow down, but cars do. So the impediment of fire trucks and ambulances slowing down to get people in an emergency doesn't exist anymore. So if you get together with an assistant manager with me, get the ball rolling, you need fifty percent of the unit owners that are in the affected area. Sign a form that they want speed bump. And it can be done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh and to Mr. Lombardi's point, certainly we lost staff reach out to you to make sure we can inform you on how to involve all of your maker. Uh to get the the um speed tables, and there is a process to go through, but certainly it's something the city. Uh leaves them in in when the when the residents request it. It does take, there is a process that has to be majority of the residents over there in that area. Uh but if they're on board, we we go ahead and put those in place uh on the public roads. Um but with those statements, if uh. City manager can direct VSO to increase some of the traffic control like we've done in other areas. This isn't new, unique to just your area. Unfortunately, it seems to be universal and not just in Broward County, but the Miami. Uh Miami Dade and uh and certainly Palm Beach because uh I I think people just think it's uh. Now that they're free and released to go out, they're quarantined, they seem to be trying to rush in their cars. Very dangerous situation. Thank you.
Uh we are now on consent board appointments. There are two listed on the agenda, items number seven and eight.
Is there anyone that care to comment on item seven or eight? Anyone from the public? We go ahead and close it to the public commission.
Motion to approve.
Review seven and eight. If anyone, any polls for summary, we do all together.
You can do it together.
Yeah. Any polls for summary? Yeah, okay. Uh so you're making a motion for Brian and seven and eight approval?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas, seconded by Vice President Preston. All in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed.
We're now on consent portion of the agenda for agreements and expenditure requests, and I know there are some polls. I'm gonna request that item number twelve be polled because it's a grant uh exceeding twenty thousand dollars, which keeps uh public hearing, so we can have the public comment on that. The manager has.
So we're polling twelve, and I know we're doing thirteen and more discussions, are correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the public who care comment on items nine, ten, or eleven by both hands in the audience? Um anyone online? Nine, ten, or eleven. Okay, which item would you like to speed out, sir?
Number ten.
Please come on up. City turn. You want to read ten? You want to read out order?
How do you prefer to do it, Mayor? Um you want to do nine and eleven first?
Mission, are you okay with doing nine and eleven individually right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do nine and eleven. We'll come back to ten for the public comment. Do you need to read them? City turn?
Um I don't, but I can. Numbers nine and eleven. So that will be the consent portion of the agenda that you would be approving as a slate. It's really just numbers nine and eleven.
Okay, nine and eleven. Mission, do you have any? Not see any, not having any public comment. We'll go ahead and look for a motion for items nine and eleven.
Motion to approve.
Nine and eleven. We have a motion from uh Commissioner Parnas, seconded by Commissioner Hudek. Your roll call, please.
Commissioner Droski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
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 Item number ten is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving agreement with the Urban Land Institute Southeast Florida Caribbean District Council for a technical assistance panel. To conduct comparisons of potential commuter rail station locations, authorizing execution of the agreement in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, providing for an effective date.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. My name is David Maria. I'm uh here for me checking out government council. We are at uh ten. Um I just wanted to speak how um how in favor we are of this this leadership role that the uh the commission is taking. Um you know, this may seem unrelated, but back at our summit, um while you attended, the mayor spoke uh about the. The consensus building, the successes that the city has had, particularly with in um the project, the Southwest Ten Street Extension, the Southwest Expressway. And in and of itself, this study could be a catalytic change maker for Pioneer Grove. More importantly, it gives this body an opportunity to take a leadership role in the broader discussion about whether the county is gonna get a. An East Coast commuter railway that can support um the affordable housing that everybody in the county needs. Because if you're gonna put workforce housing in Deerfield Beach or the Dixie Corridor, you need to get those workers with it. And we have plenty of our, yeah, I I attended the meeting in Fort Lauderdale today. The battle lines are owed to be drawn on infrastructure improvements. Need to get across the new river and that there are people around those communities out west that. Um want affordable housing here in the east, but they don't want to pay for the infrastructure. There are trade associations, I want to say plan A. There is a uh. An option not to build, and this could be delayed, but I think the city's leadership goal in taking a look at this now, what's the bright future. Be in the city and county should be commended and I. That constituency here in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Is there anyone else from the public care comment on the side? Commissioner Parnas?
I I approve this for the following reason. Major cities, our county is like major city like Chicago and New York, you take it in its entirety. Is burdened with traffic that's unbearable. Yet we keep widening roads and adding more and more cars as the population grows. Public transportation, it's inexpensive and functioning. Is not a for-profit operation, but a service for the communities. Florida lacks good. Public transportation. This is an opportunity for us to be in the forefront, setting up. A station in a commuter rail line that'll benefit the city and the county. And the two counties, the south and the north. That's why I approve. Because it's the future. There's no more space to build roads. And yet more and more people move to Florida. How are we gonna get them from point A to point B? Unless we look at the future and say, public transportation. You look at every major city. The United States. They have good public transportation. When I was a boy, we could drive into Manhattan. Most of the people I know now from New York no longer own cars that live in Manhattan. Because of the good public transportation. That's the future. Not adding more cost to the roads till it bursts. So I think this is an important item to improve.
Um I'm gonna close it to the public. Is that a motion you'd like to make?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Parnas.
Second.
Who's second by Vice Mayor Preston. Um we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Droski? Commissioner Droski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number twelve is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to the. DPR Youth Enrichment Association for Academics and Athletics, Inc., to support the Packer Rattlers Youth Football Cheerleading and Academic Support Programs, providing for execution, severability, and an effective date.
Mission? I'll make a motion to approve. Um okay, if you want to hold it now, I'm gonna hold it to the public. That's it. Uh anyone from the public care to comment on the side? Not seeing any online, anyone written in. The close it to the public. Uh we have a motion by Vice Mayor Preston.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hudek. Uh excuse me, Commissioner, had, Commissioner Hudek, you just put your hand up.
I know.
Parnas, did you want to comment, Commissioner Hudek?
I did.
Oh, you ready ahead?
Thank you very much. Um when we brought the Packer Rattlers back, one of uh and when we provided them funds. One of the things that we stipulated was um their their ability to show us their books, make sure that the spending is going in the right direction. Um and I just want to make sure that they have fulfilled that obligation again this year.
Just that too, she can comment on that.
Can you sure, Jack? I apologize. It's a little hard to hear you through the zoom.
I'm sorry. When we originally decided approved to give funds to the Packer Rattlers, one of the stipulations was that they open up their books. And we uh were able to see and make sure that those funds were going where we expected. So I just want to make sure that uh they are once again in compliance uh with those stipulations.
They are, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Droski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Question or question?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the ranking and award of request for qualifications, number twenty-two dash zero five dash P C. For the Pioneer Grove Infrastructure Improvements Pedestrian Lighting Complete Streets Project, the top-ranked responsive and responsible proposer, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. Authorizing the city manager to negotiate agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, City Commission, if it would be okay, because these were on consent, um if we could do the presentations, it's from the same uh same firm, same department, uh back to back for not only Pioneer. Grove Improvements, but FAU Research Boulevard. And the reason why we want to do the present, uh the presentations in that way, so we can. Not only show you the 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 projects themselves, but one of the important things I think that the City Commission needs to be aware of is some of the background on on the funding as it relates to the CIRTACs. Um where those funding numbers came from and where we are today with county in relation to uh to the costs. I know Mr. Sroga also has some additional. Did you?
No, I was just gonna mention, if we were gonna present them together, I was gonna read the title for item number fourteen too, but we will need separate votes on both of those. Yep. So I'm gonna go ahead and do that unless you have anything more, Mr. Manager. Okay. Item number fourteen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the ranking and award of request for qualification, number. Twenty-two dash zero four dash P C for the FAU Research Boulevard Southwest Eleventh Way Improvement Project for the top-ranked responsive and responsible proposer, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. Authorizing the city manager to negotiate agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor. Um tonight I'm here with representatives from Kim Lee Horn and Associates. They were the top-ranked offer for both of these um projects. Um I wanted you you all to have an opportunity to see the proposals that that they presented to the evaluation committee, seeing the quality of the work. Um and the uh their methodology and approach to these projects, which I really thought was, you know, uh very innovative. Um we we do want to remind you, these are CIRTAC-funded projects, uh so we are beholden to an I O A that will execute in the city and the county. Um that does make us um responsible for only eligible items with uh the county's CIRTACs uh funding. Uh that would include any roadway and drainage items and lighting, uh any kind of decorative items uh that the city would desire. Or decorative features such as landscaping would be exclusions of uh of this project funded through CIRTAC. So any of those things that the city desires to do in excess of um the CIRTAC-funded items, uh we would have the funds separately. Um so again, tonight, what we're here to discuss is really the ranking of the evaluation committee of the first-ranked offer, show you their proposals, uh their. Methodology and approach to this project, um and seek your consent uh in their ranking. Uh we hope in February to bring forward uh the proposal for contract execution um for those CIRTAC-eligible items. Um and at that point, we'll discuss uh those ineligible items such as decorative components, uh any water and sewer improvements that we need to make. Underground um in conjunction with roadway improvements, um and and sources of funding for those additional improvements. Uh so with that, I'm gonna turn it over uh to Jonathan, uh who is our project manager for the first project presented tonight, which is our Pioneer Grove Infrastructure Improvement. And I'll turn it over to him. And I'll turn it over to him some.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, my name's John A. I'm a landscape architect with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. How, how do I ask?
Start asking the first, advance.
Okay, advance, please. So I'm a, I'm, I'm gonna be the project manager for this project, I have more than 26 years' experience by, the basis of my practice at Kim Lee Horn is serving municipal clients. Uh, you'll see that in some of the resume, uh, and items that I have in this, uh, in this presentation a little bit later. Uh, I've been a leader of numerous complex projects, uh, next slide. So this is a, uh, an impossible list to, to read and list out, but this is just some of the streetscape projects that our firm has completed, uh, most of these in South Florida, a lot of these in Broward County and Palm Beach, California, next slide. Including one project in particular that had a lot of the features that I think the city had asked for us to look at for this corridor project. Uh, this is Clamata Street in downtown West Palm Beach, a project that I was the design lead for and the project manager for. This is a multiple-phase project, a lot different than what the majority of second will be for this project. But I think the downtown area could resemble a little bit, um, the, the, uh, look and feel of this project because of its more urban nature. Uh, some of the things that we did for Clamata Street included permeable pavement bioswells, which is something that I think the city's looking for with this project. It's very pedestrian-centric, uh, we widened sidewalks quite a bit for it. Uh, we have configurable on-street dining, uh, you see the ballers in this picture are actually retractable in the parking spaces where we can create a parking space for a dining experience depending on where, uh, what, what's happening that time of day. Next slide. Uh, so some of the city's goals for this project, again, uh, lighting design is enhancing lighting, looking still to safety along the street, uh, walk, walkability of the corridor, um, enhancing that Pioneer Grove design standards. So understanding that there's a looking field that we really want to establish here, make sure that the district is, uh, is established reflecting the horse historic legacy of the area. We wanna make sure we look at drainage design, I mentioned permeable pavers earlier. We're gonna be looking at bioswells also built into, uh, the urban streetscape as well. And of course, there's, uh, utility improvements associated with this project. Next slide. So some of the challenges that we saw with this corridor are, uh, the overhead utilities that limit the types of trees that we can put along the streetscape. Trees are, having large canopy trees is important for that shade along the street, but in some areas, we may not be able to do that. Utility pole placement is actually limits some of the opti- optimal sidewalk placement. Uh, the existing drainage infrastructure is kind of in the way of also where sidewalk widening might occur, so we'll modify some of that. And then looking at the plan for future development along this corridor, how do we accommodate that through our, uh, the creative design? And then, of course, safe, that's your connectivity throughout. Next slide. So looking at the north end of this side, this side area that I talked about a little more urban, has, uh, more of the commercial uses associated with it, this is between northeast First and southeast Second Street. We have a 50-foot right away for a portion of it, a 70-foot right away, uh, south of Hillsborough Boulevard. Looking to do a lot of permeable pavement, um, parallel parking, very similar to what we did on Clamata Street. Got urban bioswell opportunities, which might take the form of a curb edit and a bulb out uh, around a parking space where it might actually be a depressed area, so you would treat it at the roadside as well. Uh, again, looking at the dining flexibility, we're looking at what kind of future uses might come along here. I think the, the design standards for that, uh, Pioneer Grove Village really would establish, you know, a, a different kind of pattern along the street. Uh, development pattern that might accept better, or better accept the, uh, on-street dining opportunities. Next slide. So we took a look at what some before and after, uh, might look like on this here, the, the before image looking north. This is what it could look like, adding in some of those design features that we're talking about in this project, enhanced lighting, uh, the permeable pavers in the roadway and the parking lane, uh, some bioswells for the bulb outs, sorry, you see the grass, uh, the wildflower with the areas along the roadside. And then repeating some of the design, uh, flavor that's already been established in the downtown, some of the paper patterns are along the sides as well. Next slide. And then this is a section, uh, of what we thought that that could look like, again, uh, this kind of preliminary look, but showing, you can see where the permeable pavers are underneath the parking strips and where we can establish some depressed areas, the roadside, where we can do the bioswells as well. Next slide. So this is south, uh, southeast Second Street, also including southeast Fourth Street, all the way to southeast 10th. So there's a lot of different opportunities here, but I think the main focus of this area is gonna en- enhancing the mobility of this area and trying to do some little bit of traffic calming as well. Next slide. So we took a look at a couple of different before and after, I'm just scared, so this is the intersection at second and Court. Um, I think there's an opportunity here, next slide, to do a, um, what's called a traffic calming style of roundabout. This is a, um, more of a diverter around the intersection, more or less, uh, it would provide where the, the wheels, actually the car could actually mount the, uh, inner ring of that favored area. And a lot of larger vehicles can maneuver through, and emergency vehicles can maneuver through a little faster. But it causes people to slow down as they go through that intersection. Next slide. This is another image, this is just off of that area, um, along southeast Second, next image. And again, adding some of that, the roadside on-street parking in some areas, creating those, the widened pathways on both sides of the road and enhancing the streetscape with trees and bioswells. I think it's gonna really, uh, bring a, a unique look to the area, um, and hopefully spurs new types of development in the area. Well. Next slide. I think that's the end of, and we've got one more, I'd say, this is the section that we did last same year, and it shows the permeable pavers in the, uh, parking lane, some of the ideas we might have to buy as well as the roadside.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have is a very different, uh, type of project, it's a capacity improvement project. Uh, and this is for FAU Research Park Boulevard, so the next for FAU Research Park Boulevard would be north of 48th Street to 10th Street. Um, and the intent here is to add, uh, capacity, so what we're looking to do is take a two-lane road and make it four-lane road uh, with the divided center median. Uh, and so we have, the next presenter is gonna show the approach to that project.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, thank you. Uh, my name is Arthur Strunico, and I'm with Kim Lee Horn and, Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Next slide. So a little bit of background about Kim Lee Horn. Uh, we've been established about five years ago in Florida, we had about a thousand people, at least, sort of. Break down some resources, and, uh, we're in full progress. Uh, we have best senior on this. We get it started, the city of here, we're best in prison. And finally, we have local presence here, here, uh, Ray Beach, we're in West Palm Beach, as long as time is big. Next slide. So some of the keys that, uh, myself are, about the deputy project manager. But, um, yeah, I don't know, if, like, um, you're a sound, uh, basis, they might, whatever, will be part of this. Next slide, please. So, or like, oh, are you? The segment of FAU Research Park Boulevard is the one that's shown, and it's essentially a missing link because segment three, which goes from Southmore, the northeast. 48th Street has recently been obstructed, as well as segment one that goes from southwest 10th Street to West Palm Boulevard, also hasn't been. So essentially, today, as it is a two-lane road, it is a bottleneck between those projects that have four lanes. Next slide, please. So what will be included in this couple of services for this project is roadway design, more widened road. Four lengths, so the drainage sign that will be in terms of permeable, uh, utility design, that can protect the. Lighting and landscape. Next slide. So here's a typical section that we developed when working on the project and how we saw it from, from the beginning. We, we will be proposing a trace median in the middle, so that provides some opportunities for potential landscape replacement, or, or, uh, uh, as well as, uh, continuous bike lanes and sidewalks in on both east and west sides, which currently are not there today, but is continuing. And we'll, we'll be providing that throughout the project.
It's good, Mr. You can make a little auto, but I'm appreciative.
There, we'll mess with it. I'll try again.
Much better.
Sorry about that. Next slide, please. So this is another typical section that we, we evaluated for the project. It happens to be in the north portion of the project, and the only difference here is, um, we, we, we no longer have the opportunity to provide larger plantings in the median, uh, just because of the side distance issues, which is, this is where the drivers are able to see when the cars are making a turn into a decent distance. So, uh, everything else stays pretty much the same. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to provide some innovation in this quarter, there's two schools and there is, uh, residential communities that are part of the road, so we said, how, how can we make this more innovative and safer? And what we came up with is instead of having the bike lanes adjacent to the, to the travel lanes where the vehicles would ride, we proposed a separated bike lanes, which means behind the curb, separated by a landscaping strip. And then again, separated from the sidewalk where the pedestrians would walk by a smaller planting area. So that, that will provide more of a character to, to the area and enhance pedestrian bicycle safety. Next slide, please.
And all the designs that I've seen between two, the widest and the lighting underground.
Mr. Partas, can you say all the questions?
You can say it, but, but, okay, I'll wait.
It's okay, it's all very, that's all right.
Sure, yes, please.
Sure.
So, uh, here we show the, the map of, uh, a few critical locations that we've identified during the pursuit of this project. We will not go through details on, on, on all of them, just focus on, on a couple. We have stakeholders also identified on this map, we have Island Christian Academy, Deerfield Beach High School, Praxis, uh, Assistant Living, uh, WoodSpring Suites, Grand Vare, and, and others. So, next slide, please. So the first one, the first critical location that we wanted to present our approach, uh, it happens to be in front of, of the two schools. Today, the, the crossing is not designated and it doesn't have any, any paving markings or signage that they're approached. So what, what we propose to do here is install a, a signal that will flash every time pedestrian approach is supposed to push button, that will alert the driver of coming pedestrian. Um, and we'll slow, we'll, we'll stop them. And, and, uh, we will include obviously all the associated signage and paving markings that will, will go with that. Next slide, please. So another location that we evaluated is FAU Research Boulevard intersection with Southwest 15th Street. So based on our conversations with, with the engineering department, um, there is a possibility of proposing a roundabout at this intersection. So we, we preliminary design a roundabout that would be, uh, all, uh, the government right here, however, there are some impacts that would be associated with, with this design and we'll, we'll need to get into a little more details once, once we get into the actual engineering part of it. Next slide, please. Firstly, one of the aesthetics features we can't forget about the character of this order is, is the sign at the entrance for that, you know, that we're, we are looking now in the southbound direction along FAU Research Boulevard on Southwest 10th Street. And this is an aesthetic feature that, that could be proposed as part of this project. Next slide, please. So we've done a few projects that are similar that have streetscaping bicycle pedestrian capacity improvements. Some of them are, are shown here, first one is Wild Road, which is in Broward County. Yeah, it was one of those projects where we had widening pedestrian facilities and bike lanes that we were adding to the road. Next slide, please. Uh, another interesting one that, that we've done in the past, this finish and possibly in Miami, it's, uh, it's a pretty unique corridor as it crosses, uh, the bay and same, same thing here with about a bike lanes, pedestrian facilities. And, and landscaping for, for the area. Next slide, please. And lastly, uh, the streetscaping projects for the city of Naples. Central Avenue, this project actually had two roundabouts that were designed similarly, bike and pedestrian facilities were created. They were separated from the roadway. And aesthetics features were added for. Next slide, please.
Any questions? Um, Commissioner, do we have any questions for each, oh, no, no, Mr. Partas, you do, Vice President.
In the designs that see, we're talking about the future, why is the lighting, why do I see wires sprung? That a hurricane can knock down, causing death, injury, loss of life, instead of putting them underground?
So we are, we are clearly limited on budget, um, we are limited on budget.
You take your ask off, that was all right.
Yes.
Like, it's okay.
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, or it can be over six feet, that would be great.
Thank you. We, uh, you know, we are limited on budget and that would be a local cost to us. Uh, you know, current estimates for undergrounding overhead power lines are a million dollars a mile, so. And that was an estimate as of like maybe five years ago. Um, I'm sure the costs have only increased, uh, as of late. Um, but what I can tell you is that, um, if it's the city's desire to do that, we would need to appropriate funding for that. Uh, CIRTAC does not cover undergrounding overhead utilities. And that would definitely be a local cost, and, you know, we would need to prioritize that amongst all the other, uh, priorities the city has. But again, there are a lot of items that are not eligible under the CIRTAC program, such as the decorative features, pavers, the landscaping, um, any, anything that is, uh, beyond what you would typically see on any standard-issue roadway. Anything above and beyond that would be at the local municipalities cost.
Uh, forgive me, but to me, we're talking about the future, we have to cut the project down a little bit, do it right the first time, fine. But to do it, say, budget, so we're gonna put old fashioned wiring up there, first hurricane comes along, the people have no lights, your electric is out, uh, to me is wrong.
And I will say, it's been, uh, all of the, uh, all the poles on southeast Second Avenue have recently been hardened by, you know, they, they put in much more robust poles than where they are previously.
I'm worried about the pole going down, I'm worried about the wires going down. I've been on Hillsboro Boulevard during hurricane, when a pulse was snapped, wires were laying on the ground, sparks all over the place, and we were out of electricity for about 10 days.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly.
Project, I don't want that repeated.
We can secure the pricing for, you know, for that, and that would be an additional cost to the city.
Like I said, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. If we have to do half the project at a time, in terms of length, fine. But let's, let's do it so it's gonna last 30 years and, and not have. But let's let's do it so it's gonna last thirty years and and not have the problems that are caused by wiring overhead.
Commissioner Parton, as the um the project as presented in the Surtex plan. The scope of work, so the segment of the roadway which we are looking to reconstruct. Um is what the county is going to be expecting us to to deliver. Um of course, when we talk about some of the additional. Um I'll just call them bells and whistles that we we think would enhance the project in the area. Um that's gonna be at a city cost, uh of course, but at a minimum, the county is gonna be expecting us to um complete. At you know, at a minimum, uh the segment of roadway in which uh we presented to them. And and given the fact that you're this, when we talk about FAU Research Boulevard. Um you're talking, you you really can't split that project up. You have to look at it from segment, segment or intersection, intersections. In the case of Pioneer Grove. Um that is is something, again, that we would, we could certainly look to FPNL to provide a cost. I will tell you, as it is, um the amount of Surtex funding that we're receiving for this these projects. Were estimates provided back in uh the mid two thousand and tens. Uh and we we know what construction costs have 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 happened since then. So. You know, the the concern that we currently have on both these projects. Is that the Surtex funding that will be available to us for the construction phase. Will not fully uh support even the eligible items within these Surtex projects. Um so those are gonna be conversations that we have, that we're gonna need to have with the commission once we understand those costs. And even as uh as as Sejani alluded to as well, with the design costs as well, when we talk about some of the. Uh ineligible design costs as well, which are are not as much as, of course, the construction portion. But nonetheless, we could ask FPNL for cost estimates on those. But but I I do caution you and the rest of the commission that even the roadway construction project. Is likely, will not be, you know, fully funded by the Surtex. As it is designed and perhaps even under what would be eligible for these projects as well. Because of the outdated outdated cost estimates that we would like for the county. To uh, you know, make reference to. But um and and acknowledge at least so that we can hopefully fund these as, you know, they were intending these projects to be completed. And relying on the municipalities to to get some of this money spent down. Um but but I I can't really be confident in that. And just as a as a as a gauge for you, the S-curve uh undergrounding project is uh two point three to nothing.
Just for that little section.
Just for that little section.
We should do that.
Very much, Mr. Mayor. Um this question is for city staff. Um I did not see a slide that showed the vision for Sample to Forty Fourth Street. Now, last month, we did this B tactical program where the goal is to reduce the speed limit. Uh we clocked a car going ninety nine miles an hour in that area there. We had residents out there, myself as and other members of the commission were out there painting the roadways, putting up these. This landscaping to to control the speed. Um how is this project going to dovetail with that to make sure that the vision stays the same?
Yeah, so that segment is a slightly different character. Um and that that project, though, we did some temporary improvements. The intent there. Is that we fund the permanent improvements, which we've applied for grants uh through the Complete Streets Initiative program. Um so that's the hope, is that we receive some funding uh in the next five years to make those temporary improvements, permanent improvements. Uh the character of that corridor is a little different. It's far more residential. Uh the character of this corridor uh between Tenth and Forty Eighth is very commercial. Uh with hotels and restaurants and businesses. Um so here we are looking at a capacity improvement um and access to local businesses and and. Um commercial and industrial uh properties.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh in the presentation that you just gave. Did you address the safety issue at Buck Pride Way at Eleventh uh Drive? That 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 needs to be outlined there.
That that's the roundabout, the the roundabout location, the traffic calming uh roundabout location. Um so we have been unable to meet a warrant for a traffic signal. So in the absence of being able to do a traffic signal, we will get other opportunities for traffic calming. And what's available to us would be something like a roundabout. Uh so that was, I think that was proposed on a slide. Do you know what slide number that is? Yeah, has there, I don't know if you have access to that slide um for South, it's uh Southwest Fifteenth Street and. Um and Southwest Eleventh Way?
It's Slide Six.
Slide Six, thank you.
So what was the reasoning uh for not to be able to go like that?
So you need to be a warrant for a traffic signal. Uh and we, our capacity, our our um. The traffic has never met one um for a signal. Um so we can't install a signal, but but, you know, the other options available to us would be something like a roundabout. Sorry, it was FAU. And this is just a very preliminary level design that just shows uh, you know, what the options would be with the um.
It's actually further down, I'm sorry. It'll be eleven hundred or ten.
Yeah, there there you are. So so that's what we're exploring. Um but there there would be some impacts to a city lift station at that location. So that's something that we'll have to evaluate and see. Uh the viability and relocating lift station. I thought something that's able to be done. But uh the other thing that we're gonna look at is, you know, dying of a stupid roundabout. So that's, this is like, um. This is as per, you know, minimum MASH, though, I assume. So, you know, we'll look at, we'll look at viability. Uh seeing what can happen, but we're looking at that area.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you, Mayor. I I fully uh am aware that the funding. For number uh items thirteen and fourteen is nowhere near what we need to complete these projects. Just by way of example, number fourteen, uh we're getting four hundred and eighty thousand and the construction cost estimated in two thousand and sixteen. Was over four million dollars. So clearly. Um one plus two is not equaling three in in this equation, because that four million dollars is likely much higher now than it was back in two thousand and sixteen. However, the why why it's so important that we approve these two tonight? Is to keep us in the in the mix with the Surtex dollars going forward. I don't know if this was said earlier during any of the presentations. You know, being remote, it's hard to hear sometimes. But, you know, this is cycle one of the Surtex dollars from the MPO, and a lot of cities are behind us. And have not presented their projects or received funding from the MPO yet. So for us to get dollars in cycle one. Even though they're far short of what we need um to fully implement these projects is still very important because it puts us in line. For cycle two dollars, because it's just like when we go to the state and we ask the state um. For funds for funding our projects here in the city. The first thing the state asks is, you know, have you received funding before? And so that's why we get funding every year for our Alzheimer's centers, because we've received it on a continual basis for at least the last last decade. So by getting in line with the MPO and getting these dollars, even though they're far short, is extremely important. And that's why we need to support numbers thirteen and fourteen. Um tonight, in my opinion, the comment, the comment that I have, and it's not really, it's not a question, it's a comment. Um and I told the city manager I was going to bring this up tonight. There was a slide that actually shows what I was going to say. That this wrote for item number fourteen, that this is a segmented road. You have. From Sample to Forty Eighth is called Southwest Eleventh Way. From Forty Eighth to um Southwest Ten Street, it's uh FAU Research Park Boulevard. And then from Ten Street to Hillsborough Boulevard, it's uh Natura Boulevard. So you've got three different names for the same roadway there. I would just ask, it would be my request to ask staff to at least vet. You know, renaming all three segments to one name. Uh and and we can kind of bring some branding to that avenue and bring some prominence to it going forward. And like, this is, you know, whatever you wanna call it. Like in Fort Lauderdale, you have Los Olas Boulevard. And as soon as you say Los Olas, everybody knows what you're talking about. And you're you you know the stretch in Fort Lauderdale when you when you say that. And maybe this is something that we can brand and bring to. To Deerfield Beach uh with that corridor. It's an underutilized corridor, especially between Forty Eighth. Um and and Southwest Ten Street, which is only going to get more developed and bigger uh along the way. So it's something that I would just ask that staff take a look at. Uh and bet the pl- the pluses and minuses. I I fully understand there's a lot of minuses to what I'm to what I'm suggesting. Um for example, the major minus would be the stretch between Sample and Forty Eight. Because you have residential in there. And if we were to name it, let's just say, just for example, and I'm not suggesting this, it's just for discussion purposes. If the entire stretch were to be called FAU Research Park Boulevard. So the stretch from Sample Road to Forty Eight, you know, those residences would lose the Southwest Eleventh Way designation. So you'd have address changes. Um you'd have delivery, possibly complications, especially in the residential section. So I I know there's complications to what I'm saying. But I think it at least deserves a look at. If we're gonna spend the time and the dollars improving this corridor, which vastly needs it. Um let's think of a way to kind of brand that entire stretch from Sample to Hillsborough Boulevard. Uh and and bring some prominence to uh to Deerfield Beach with with that. So I just ask that it just be to be vetted. Um and brought up for future discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um I'm gonna open this to the public. I see Gwen Clark read your hand raised.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy New Year to all of you. Uh Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Uh my concern, I heard Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Preston bring it up about the fifth, the light at Fifteenth and Third. Um that has been a problem for a long time, and we've been talking about. A needing, the need of a street light at that uh intersection. I know that you're talking about a roundabout, but it it's not practical, in my opinion, to put a roundabout there. What it needs, it need is a traffic signal. And I think we've had, can uh. Talk about the number of accidents that have happened in that, at that intersection and being right at the high school. Um we were told before, yes, that we could get a traffic signal there. So I don't know what the uh. Discrepancy is now, you're talking about putting a roundabout. And also, how is this going to affect? The um flow into Mayo Howard Park? You know, we don't have enough space to parking in there now. And is this gonna take away more space from the parking uh at the park? I would like to know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who care to comment on this side? Yes, sir.
How you doing? I am Joe Chastey, four two zero one, he's one avenue, Deerfield Beach. Two things. One, uh as Commissioner Hodak and I have discussed, uh flow. Of uh say, I guess you guys call it second three, is that second three from Sample? Twenty, uh you know, they recently did some, I guess, temporary improvement, which mixed reviews, a lot of people hated. Some people don't care for it, others, you know, see where it goes. Uh the flow from the residential section, I guess you'd call it, to. Forty Eighth to Ten Street. We're speaking about opening it up to a four lane highway. Uh that's obviously gonna impact the residential because of the majority of the traffic comes from the residential area to Ten Street. Uh very southern traffic coming from east west on Forty Eighth. Old right, so the the north south corridor is always gonna be a nature and other things to consider. If ninety five screws up, that's the bypass, you know, either military or third act. Most, I'd say eighty percent of people like to go third act. Now, once you get to forty eight and open it up to a four lane highway. Okay, the same issue that it was before with third act. Uh Sample to Forty Eight. It's traffic light on one side, so I I don't think I've seen anything showing the traffic light on both side. Uh and if there is, I didn't see it. Uh that's an issue now, again, alluding to uh Vice Mayor. On Deerfield, is it Deerfield Buck Pride Way? For part one, Buck Pride Way. See my mom. So I understand that, you know, may not be sufficient to watch to show traffic down, but have to account, once you get a four lane highway, it's coming right in traffic. So it's like, okay, well, it doesn't have one now, but as soon as it's a four lane highway, traffic's gonna be there. It's just gonna show up overnight. So that in itself. In my opinion, should show that, okay, a traffic study should be done or accounted for. The four lane highway, right now, it's two lane or three lane uh because of the interlane. So I I personally feel that with the high school there and the improvement, and we all know people drive. What we call South Florida speed. Uh and we have high schools walking that, they don't sometimes obey traffic crosswalks. So in my opinion, I think that needs to be concerned in uh, it's concerning and need to be considered on this whole side that we all going. But more importantly. The roundabout. You're talking about.
Nothing.
Uh that's just north of emergency give, so that's gonna be another issue. And I'm pretty sure that they're gonna have something to consider taking into account, depending on traffic flow, et cetera. So, you know, that that's kind of my still or three minutes that I have on the thing, so need that to be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Go ahead and close it to the public then. Um it sounds like the design for that section along that FAU Research Park area is gonna be similar to what you have further north. Along nature there, where you have a median on the inside, it separates the two lanes of traffic. You have sidewalks, which is pretty far away from the actual vehicular traffic. Um I think it's important for everybody to know that it's not city's decision not to light there. It's not our call, you know, task for to put in there. And they're telling us it doesn't warrant it. And that is a situation we have in many locations. I know District Three, District Four, many locations we have the same thing, in which. Certainly based on traffic accidents and what we have, even turning a turn light on in in areas that we feel it's warranted. But we don't have the ability to make that decision, unfortunately. And whatever was decided in the past, I don't know why action wasn't taken at that opportunity to do it. If it was granted in the past, but certainly not granted now, it seems to be a bit of an issue with not having the ability to be able to do that. This roundabout might be a solution for that. And I I will say, I don't think it's gonna have any impact on Mayo Howard Park as far as taking away any land there based on what was presented. As far as the park, and that would be a separate issue, just purely the road that's going in front of it. Um there's limited funding that we're getting here. This is one of the earlier projects we put in. When we were trying to, with the very strict rules and ridiculous rules, quite frankly, the county put in place for us. Was to make sure we could at least get something on the books to get ahead of other cities, so we could capture that fund. Um they didn't allow us to go back, made conditions to the project. We had to submit what we had back, how many years ago now?
More than five, twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, this was approved. So this goes back to plans that we put in way back then. Our ability to adjust it is simply taking away, you know, it's taken out of our hands. We don't have the ability to do that. County's literally, we have to take what we can. This is our chance to get money that will go to another city if we don't capture this fund now, go towards a project. So. Uh understanding there are some limitations to this that are unfortunate and frustrating. But it is a unique opportunity that we should have placed on. And I'm certainly not gonna break up the project to look for some enhancements that. Are nice to have, when there are a few things that are must haves. So um I. So I I am in support of this, and I appreciate the presentations that we're making, kind of getting everybody understanding what's there. Keep in mind, as this project moves forward, most of that funding is gonna have to start coming from the city, I would imagine, unless there's other opportunities out there. With that, when that funding comes that way, we might have the ability to make some changes that will meet the needs of what we need here now, as opposed to what was presented back five years ago. But if if we have to make sure we can capture this funding while we can, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. And of course, we'll look for other alternative fundings that are coming down from the federal government to help support some of this and offset this as well.
But I think all the points that were brought up are are well taken, but I think you know, it is rare, especially a lot of these projects, when you see streets being taken away, it's a rare opportunity to expand and and make it safer, believe it or not, by expanding. This is one of the few opportunities that I've seen to be able to do that, I think that's what this has the opportunity to do, at least in some of the stretches. Commissioner looking for a motion? Motion by Vice Mayor Preston.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Just want to make sure we're clear. Commissioner Parnas, your motion was for item number thirteen, correct?
Correct.
All right, and that is the pedestrian lighting pioneer growth item. And your second, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will call, please.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Okay, now, item number fourteen is the FAU Research Park Boulevard project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas. We'll call, please.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the ranking and award of request for proposals number twenty one dash thirty five dash TC for the aquatics facility renovations Deerfield Beach Middle School, authorizing execution of an agreement with the top ranked responsive and responsible contractor, recreational design and construction, Inc. for the renovations in an amount not to exceed one million six hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred dollars, providing for implementation and an effective date.
I see that eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars of this is coming from the American Rescue Plan.
That that's correct, Mayor. So this is above the estimate of what we had in the ARP. So we always talk about, you know, these projects as they come in, some will take from some, some will have to come from others, or make adjustments as we go. So this is one of those projects that that we, I think we estimated in ARP, if not mistaken, seven hundred and fifty thousand. So this is well above that.
Anyone, I appreciate any comments for the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this side? Let's see, I'll close it to the public, Commissioner. Our city to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Hudek. We'll call, please.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudek.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending traffic for twenty two cemeteries in the city code of ordinances to revise and update cemetery provisions, providing for codification, separability, conflicts, and an effective date. This is first reading.
Commissioner, I have Ms. Renaud, who has a presentation for this side.
Then Commissioner, my understanding is Ms. Renaud is going to be speaking on the cemetery fee item as well, which is item number seventeen, so I'm just gonna read that title into the record, or she makes way up. Number seventeen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting amended schedule of fees and charges from Pineview Cemetery and Deerfield Beach Memorial Cemetery, providing for complex implementation and effective date.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. First ordinance, the first reading on the first ordinance is kind of cleaning up language that hasn't been adjusted in the ordinance since nineteen seventy nine. For instance, there is a cemetery commission, which is also the, this commission. So the idea that you would have to have a cemetery commission that in the language then is this commission, the I. The concept is just to go directly to this commission, which is what the cemetery commission is. The other thing is there were three separate funding mechanisms that were very complicated and quite honestly, difficult to track. What we're asking is to streamline that. There are really two fundings, so this is, one is the plot, excuse me, the plot fee and the perpetual care, those fees that we will collect, which will go into the perpetual care fund. And then anything beyond that, which is usually burial services and overtime, which are currently now general fund expenses, would go into the general fund cemetery account. And so we're going from three funds to two with the same purposes, with the same, the perpetual care fund will still be an investment fund. But it makes it a lot less complicated. You have three dollars per square foot here and there. I think, Anthony, did I get all the main changes there?
I think you did with respect to the ordinance, and and one of the keys that you touched on at the end there is previously it had, you know, that's three dollars per square foot of the amount that was received for purchases of velvet burial plots and services. Just keep in mind, that number was in your code, and it's been there since then, nineteen seventy nine, and hasn't been updated, so you can imagine probably that that's no longer adequate to to cover the perpetual care.
So that's the first reading on the ordinance to to streamline that, doesn't affect the fees, the fee schedule is next. So you wanna have a vote on that and then, or do the fee presentation?
Ms. Renaud, you can just continue on the presentation. I think they're both on the same subject, and we can, the City Commission can discuss them separately or together at their.
Thank you very much. So you guys probably remember then in August of twenty twenty, you updated the cemetery rules and regulations. At that time, the fees were not adjusted, so the additional rules and regulations added some good things in. Made for an opportunity to encourage us to get the information at least two days in advance for burials, which is really important in terms of staffing and organizing, you know, unfortunately with COVID, we have had some weekends where we've had seven or eight females, and it, you know, having less than two days is a, is very problematic for us, so. The exceptions can be made by the director. I have done a couple of those. You know, the the dilemma is really, you don't want to, a family is mourning, you don't want to say you can't be, you can't be this Saturday. But if we don't get the information until the Friday, whenever we have three other females, that's a problem. So a couple of times, we have made that exception. Those are usually how weekends where we weren't booked so heavily or where I've talked directly with the family in, and we have not had to turn the boy because of that reason itself. The other thing you added was that family members have ninety days to hold them before a plot, thanks to this family number. And that has worked out really well. I'm gonna run through the next slide. Have we, I just talked about it, but this is still on making sure that you get the directions, the verification for residency, if it's a resident rate, and making sure that if we have a perpetual, that term, if we have a consistent business that is, has three or more violations of the twelve month period, that we could suspend their access to the cemetery for a while. We have met with a couple of funeral homes and actually talked about some ways to help improve that process. One of those is gonna be, we will, right now, we take payment from a funeral home. Sometimes the family gets to the funeral home late, the funeral home gets to us late. It's a lot easier to tell the family, sorry, we need to wait a couple of days if we're dealing directly with a funeral payment. So we are gonna, we used to do that, take the direct from the funeral. We are probably gonna open that option back up, which makes it a little easier in this case if we have an exception on that, or if it's not. Payment for service charges, that needs to be paid, of course, at the time. Overtime charge, and this is something that was not there in the fee schedule, but times ninety two, outside of ninety two Monday through Friday. And weekends, we're always part of the rules and regs, that fee is consistently three hundred and seventy five dollars, so we've added that schedule this time. So here's kind of our scenario. At Memorial, we have a total of fifty seven hundred and forty plots. Of those available, full size, which is adult full size, thirty five square feet, is thirteen hundred and forty nine. Cremations, three thirty seven, infants, thirty six. And then at Pineview, we're full, and there are no more adult plots available, full size. There are cremation plots and there are infant plots, and so the question has been asked, why can't we just put a couple of those plots together and make more adult plots? But they're not all lined up together. They're, they were put in places where small lots would fit, but full size plots wouldn't. So even if you combined all that you could, I think, I think the net is twelve or sixteen is not very good. The, and went all the way back to two thousand and eighteen to make sure that we weren't just looking at COVID numbers, two thousand and eighteen to twenty one, the average is just under two hundred burials a year, seventy eight percent of those are resident, twenty two percent are non-resident. So with only nineteen hundred and fifty nine available spaces and really only thirteen forty nine on full size, the cemetery would have a potential, well, it is, gonna be out of space within less than ten years. So the importance of the perpetual care is, once you no longer have space to sell, you no longer have a resource or a funding, revenue source to maintain, and so that's why it's important. We'll go to the next page, and I'm sorry, Sam, I haven't been keeping my, you've done great, probably, keeping up, so thank you. These fees for residents have not been adjusted since nineteen ninety six, so it's twenty five years. We did look at compared rates to other cities. I went back and calculated the CPI from nineteen ninety six. And then we recommend a CPI going forward for a plot and perpetual care, so that we don't run into this issue where we don't look at these for twenty five years, and then when we run the methodology and the and the numbers, it is sticker shock, so that's what we're up against tonight. We calculated non-residents the same way with the CPI, but those fees were actually updated in two thousand and fourteen. So if you look strictly at percentages, it wonder how come? The percentage of a resident is going up so much more than a non-resident is because those fees were adjusted just seven years ago, and it's almost eight years been now. And the others were not, the residents were not adjusted until twenty five. If you look at, next page, please, the fees. So currently, a plot and perpetual care with a burial service of five thirty five is eleven thirty five. We're suggesting that a plot go up by the current cost of the poverty and the maintenance and the perpetual care is is on the escalator for this PI. We are suggesting that the burial service fee stay the same, as well as the overtime rate, stay the same. So that's on, if you look at residential full size plot, eleven thirty five, it goes up to, it is twenty six foot. For the non-resident, it goes from three thousand thirty five to forty five, forty nine. And then on down through, similarly, the exact same methodology was used, and and the rates, we're still saying burial rates stay the same. And the cremation is ready to go from six thirty five to eleven fourteen and four thirty five to a thousand fifty four on an infant plot, and then cremation, then it's three thirty five to five ninety four. And then the non-residents, same methodology, same length group. If we look at the next slide, we did look at our city to the north, Pompano, I mean, Boca, and our city to the south, Pompano. And even our new rate is much lower than those two, the two rates. And we'll say in Boca, there is no, they don't take non-residents, and we'll get into a couple of future slides. We talk about how do we resolve this issue. That is one option for us. So what we're looking at is, we're looking to approve the fees with an automatic CPI adjustment going forward, and that would max at three percent, so on years, the CPI is better than three percent, it will max, it'll max at three percent. You could, women, children, burials to residents or immediate, immediate family members of those currently buried. That would help slow down the pace of filling the cemeteries. We already talked about kind of the late instructions and the exceptions, what those fees for the late, the late instructions to to be approved. And then continued appearance to the rules. The last one, I think, is pretty important, and certainly comes with lots of pros and cons, but I I would recommend that we at least explore the opportunity for Mozilliums, including P three opportunities. You know, Mozilliums have an ROI of about seven to eight years. Like, you know, all the capital means we have, so maybe you could get a P three partnership where they lease the land or give us a percent every year, the capital, that's probably not the best, so, just something to explore. And with that, I will.
Thank you, Your Judge. Sir, Vice Mayor Preston.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I I'm really struggling with this, although I understand why we need to do this. We're in the middle of a pandemic right now. You know, there's a loss of revenue, and almost every household, people, you know, don't, just don't have the money that they would normally have. On top of that, inflation is at a tremendous rate and putting a lot of pressure on a lot of families. Now, from where we are right now, we, our old service would cost you one thousand one hundred and thirty five dollars, and the proposal is going from that to two thousand six hundred and forty two, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that would represent basically a hundred and forty five percent increase. A hundred and forty five percent increase. That's like, you know, going to, you know, to the gas pump, it's three dollars a gallon, and all of a sudden it's seven. I mean, how do, how do we survive? Though this is necessary, it's something that needs to be done. I just don't know that we should be doing it at this time. I I think we should consider waiting a little bit and see what this pandemic does. It's really putting our community at odds. It puts a lot of pressure. And additionally, if a person lost a family member, and we 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 all understand what that's about. But they could not grieve properly, because we have just said, we're gonna increase the cost of you burying your loved one a hundred and forty five percent. And so that would be tough, so the grieving process gets worse. This, because where do I come up with the money to be able to do that? And then the other side is, if we're gonna do it, we ought to consider a a schedule of how this would be met. For instance, if you were to take the the total cost of where we need to be, two thousand six hundred and forty two dollars, look at that cost. And how long would it take us to get there if we did, if we were to take twenty five percent each year? And, you know, apply it, and year four puts us where we need to be. So I, I, I would not support anything that just increases a hundred and forty-five percent, a hundred and forty-five percent in one shot. I would say that, you know, I'm more amenable to a, a schedule of, of how we get there. That's important. And the fact of the matter is, we need to get there, okay? Our crisis is just stated, hasn't changed in twenty-five years. And the other side of that is, I would hope this commission would say, because what we're hearing is that there's a financial crisis, one, you know, we need to be able to allow people actually who have loved ones in the graveyard to be able to grieve. Now, we gotta, we gotta have upkeep in our graveyard, so we gotta keep that in consideration. So that's important. But the other side of that is, is that in, in, in doing that, there are these other considerations, and. Oh, we should, this commission should consider the existing plots that we have left as far as this, residence, residence only. Because if we don't do that, without a doubt, we're going to run out of space, without a doubt, it's going to happen. And I will tell you, I, even though we look at what the non-resident rates would look like, even with, with just that, a lot of people say, okay, I bet, that's, that's good, I bet. But we already know that, that we're in some form of a crisis with our residents, and so it would be the best move for us to say, you know, residence only, residence only. And I'd like to let, to advise the commission, that I spoke with Fairway Memorial, some of the representatives from there, but then we'd be able to get a meeting where myself and the city manager would sit down and talk with them, to see if there was a possibility that we might be able to work out some sort of an agreement, whether that was to purchase, maybe five acres, whatever, and that would give us some additional space. But I think a meeting with them would be worth it, it could provide some opportunity. But I would ask this commission to truly consider residence only and a fee schedule. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Parnas.
And I hate to disagree with you. You were on the commission before, was the subject ever brought up about increasing prices ten years ago? No. Rates haven't gone up in twenty-five years, whose fault is that? I'm not looking to put blame on anybody, but reality is reality. I buried my father twenty years ago. The plot, six thousand dollars, burial, eight thousand dollars. Now, it's twenty years ago. Want to compare that to what we charge? No. It is an unfortunate fact that prices have gone up. The commissions before us, for the last twenty-five years, didn't do anything about making it equitable to the city. It's a city-owned cemetery. Costs have gone up, labor has gone up, upkeep has gone up. This is necessary, not joyously, oh, we're going to make a profit. No, it's necessary to keep our heads above water. And we're still cheaper than all the cities around us. This is necessary. I don't like to pay bills more than anybody else. But it comes at time, when you're up here looking out for the, the city, and where our money goes, we can't keep losing money. I think this is necessary, I think it's reasonable, and I don't look at percentages, I look at everywhere else and what they're charging, and they charge more, even after the increase. So I support this increase because I feel that it's necessary. I don't like it, I wish we didn't have to do it, but the commissions for the last twenty-five years have been negligent and not addressing this issue. To take it down the road even further would be criminal, in my opinion. So I support this increase.
Commissioner Parnas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I as well support the increase. I, I think it is necessary, you know, nineteen ninety-six gas was a dollar twenty a gallon. So I understand the need for it. Having it gradually up, I don't know that that's really the, the way to go. I do feel that Vice Mayor's comments with regards to limiting who is buried in, in that, in the cemetery, is definitely valid, based on, you know, the limited space right now. I think having residents only is, is a wise decision. We could limit it to immediate family members already being buried there as well, but I do think that it's important that we look at limiting the availability of these plots for non-residents. I, I, I just think it's, it's come to the point where, you know, there's, there's no other options, otherwise, we're going to be fully filled in, in less than nine years. And even with the onset of COVID, or whatever the next pandemic is, it could be even sooner. So I, I think we need to, to really look at, at moving this forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky, back, Vice Mayor Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not even so sure the city should be in the cemetery business in the first place. But to the, to the extent that we are, I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Parnas. I thought his comments were, were spot-on, actually, that if we're going to do this, we need to be with the, with the times. Even with the increases, we're below all of the other cemeteries that are around us in a large circumference. It's not even, it's not even close. So I likewise will be in, in favor of this. If there's some reasonable modifications that want to be proposed or suggested, you know, I'll listen to those, but otherwise, I'd be in favor of these two. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to reiterate that we're in the middle of a pandemic. Our country is in peril by this, this COVID-nineteen. And I think that, in and of itself, should elicit some compassion to this, the financial situation of people that are going through issues right now with just putting food on the table. So i- if we, if we were going to do this, I don't think it's wrong to, to say, let's have some sort of a schedule to do that. I agree with everything that each one of my colleagues have said, we need to get there, there's an issue, we need to address it. But it's not just addressing it, it's how we address it. Do we do it in a compassionate manner that will give the residents a chance to adjust? You, each one of my, my colleagues, if somebody increased something on you right now, a hundred and forty-five percent more, you would not be happy, that's for sure. But, you know, to have some compassion for our residents is not wrong. I know that you, everything that you said, you're right, we need to get there, and we can get there. I'm not saying not to do this, but I'm saying that it's right to understand the situation that we're in, external of this. We're in the middle of a pandemic, you see the numbers, you know what's going on, you see the inflation rate, you see what's going on with money, people losing their jobs. So it's something that I think that we need to look at. We need to always show that we're compassionate for our residents, always. This is a unique circumstances, if the pandemic went there, I would be more amenable to this, but that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To answer your question, Commissioner Parnas, like, I've been in office here now twelve years, I'll take some of that blame for it, because, yeah, it's popped up over the years several times, and it's popped up even on the dais, I believe, several times about raising the rates and keep them up close, because the issue that we've had is this has been abused for years. We've had so many people pull at, whether it be elected officials, it shouldn't have happened, and, and management saying, oh, this person's a resident, this person's a resident, they may have been born here, they haven't lived here in forty years, yet they wanted the resident rate. I remind the fact that we've had the cheapest prices in any municipality, it's been abused, which is part of the reason why we have, we're upside down, where, I, I do agree with Commissioner Drosky, I, I don't like the fact that the city of Deerfield Beach is in the business of, of having cemeteries, so I, I'm not as open to looking to buy more land to bury more people. We're going to, that, that's a, that's a business model we can never keep up with, you know, over time. But I am interested in the mausoleum aspect, it gives more bankroll, it gives more spaces for people, give them some more options, so I think that, that is an interesting option. You know, to the points that were made, I, I, I agree with Vice Mayor and, and, and most of my colleagues here at LEU who mentioned it, it needs to be resident-only at this point, because we have limited space, but it needs to be held to that. It can't be manipulated, we can't break the rules, we have to stick to that, and we have to know that. We have to know that all of us sitting up here, you're going to have people coming to you and say, oh, but, you know, let your case, that's what's been going on for years. When we've tried to address it, or we've brought it up, it's always been an issue. I think there are some things that have happened, that we've done, that we're cleaning up old messes, and some of those, quite frankly, weren't aware of. I mean, that recent change that you brought forward with the cemetery that actually had it in its guidelines, that, you know, people that, that were not white could not be buried, and that's absolutely a horrible thing, that's not something I was aware of, also. I'm glad we're wrecked behind some of this old stuff, shame on people who sat up here who knew about it back then, didn't have the guts to change it, so I applaud you for that. Here's where I struggle with, and I, and I am open-minded to Commissioner Preston's point, but I worry that it's going to be a bit of a gold rush. Once people realize the rates are going up, with limited space that we have, and knowing that, that the new fee structure is going to help us keep this going longer term, then people jump in at this already discounted price now, because they know there's limited space, and we need to get it before the price goes up, it's going to be a bit of a gold rush for people buying proper spaces. If I'm a guy selling a sandwich town for two bucks, and everybody else has been selling it for five or years, and suddenly a pandemic hits and all these issues happen, and I realize I can't keep up with that cost, and I'm upside down, I don't have any shame or, or, or fear of saying, I can't keep it up at two bucks a sandwich. I gotta get to five like everybody else, pandemic or not, you have to do that. You know, you don't, you can't say, well, sorry, customers, I have to, you know, I can't, you know, I have to raise it that rate, that's just what you gotta do to survive. And I think that's a little bit where we're at. This is not an everyday expense. To say, well, it's during a pandemic, it's going to hit these individuals, it's going to hit a very small amount of people that are needing it during this timeframe. So, you know, anybody in the next forty years who are going to need it, yes, that gives them a break, this isn't a day, day expense. I, I would struggle a little bit with, and probably be more on board with your point about the price increase being so sudden, if it was something that was a daily expense. It's not like we're going to say we're raising your water rates a hundred and forty percent right now, it's not, because it's not something that people use day-to-day. In fact, it's, a lot of times, it's something that people don't expect to use. I am, but I am open-minded to that. I, I don't, I worry about the, the gold rush aspect of it, but I don't think, I think four years is too long for me. I, I can be open-minded to that, and figure out how we get there. Remove it, remove the non-resident, for sure, and, and then make those changes to, to put us where we need to be, maybe in a shorter window. It doesn't sound like we have votes for support for that, that would be open-minded, that maybe we, people are, are open-minded to it. I don't know how to address the gold rush aspect of it. But I think if people are hurting now, they're going to jump in on, I mean, we, we need to do an increase now, we need to do an increase right now, in my opinion, that would hold off some of the gold rush. But then we, then maybe we, we break it up a little bit, maybe shorten that time window, eventually get where we need to be, a much shorter time window, do an increase right now, maybe slow up a gold rush on, on space, limited spaces, and then move it up and kind of help people out a little bit. So that would be something, a little bit of a hybrid of what you've said, hopefully we can, hopefully do that. Well, I mean, I think the suggestion would be that, you know, we, we say, okay, we're going to do a, you know, if, if we shorten it from four years to two, because I think what you're proposing, four years, obviously, it makes sense that it's twenty-five percent increase over time, it's worth it to go in. Okay? If we do two years, and it's fifty percent now, immediately, the way it was going to be fifty percent the next year after, okay? That's the way we break it, does that make sense? I, I have issues on, I haven't found that, but I was thinking that.
If, yes, Mayor, in fact, that was something along the lines of, so, yeah, considering a lot of these comments, that's kind of what I was thinking, is you did fifty percent today, and then in a year from now, the remainder of that, of, of that increase, that would, I think, get us to where we, we, our staff believes we should be in terms of our rates. I think also in consideration that, and I did not hear this, I'll bring this up, you know, we, we have less than ten years left on, on our plots. And so if you wait four years, knowing that we've been behind for so long on the perpetual care fund, that, you know, we're not going to catch up, not, not, not with the time that we have left, that's just not going to happen, for the extent that we can stop the bleeding, I think we, we should. So to me, when you look at four years, getting to that rate, which does not then take into consideration, say, the cost of living increases from now until the four years, we'll still be very far, far behind, but, you know, maybe if you did fifty percent today, and then fifty percent a year from now, and then allow the CIP to continue thereafter, un- until we run out of the plots, that might be something to, to consider.
If we, if we were to pass this, what would this go into effect?
This would go into effect, I believe we put this to go into effect upon passage. And, and I also just want to make a comment, too, and I, and I'm going to hand this over to the city attorney, but the question I also have for him, too, is, is, is we may need to bring this, if that is amenable and approved by the commission, I think I would purposely put this resolution on to the first reading, in case there was discussion and changes, we could bring the resolution back for second reading, if there were substantial changes, to have, have that passed on the second reading, and I'll give it to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I just wanted to point out, too, that the ordinance item, which is item number sixteen, does not affect, the changes in there do not affect how much residents pay. That's about, once the city receives the money, where does the money go, what fund, and then what could it be used for? So just keep that in mind, that is first reading tonight, as the manager mentioned, we will have a second reading. So you have a couple of options, if you want to make changes to the fee schedule. If you can clearly identify what those changes are tonight, we can do them tonight, or if it's the commission's pleasure, we can bring them back on, on second reading of the ordinance, and have that resolution follow on the second reading of the ordinance of the next meeting.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone from the public here, comment on the side? Okay, I'll see anybody who can be right then. Okay, I'm going to close it to the public. I know we've had two workshops, workshops on it, so, you know, I, I think we discussed that quite a bit, but, but I, I would, I think, I think we can iron it all out here. Like, I, I think we do fifty percent increase going into effect, we go residence only, which I think is what you're looking at, give direction to staff, that we look at possibly other options, if everyone's open to that. And then we, and then on the second year, you know, the full amount we need to be at, and then we put CPI in perfection, that helps us maintain, you know, otherwise, we're going to have a problem. And realizing that we're ten years out, four years, if, if, maybe, we're going to be hurt, and we might not have any spaces by a year or two. So, Commissioner Parnas, this is your, have your hand raised?
Yeah, look, we're going to be getting out of the cemetery, it's the last we buy all right. And I don't think that's a bad thing, to get out of the cemetery. I understand doing fifty percent this year and then increasing it, those people that will rush, we may sell out the remaining plots, the residence only, in the next year, because they realize it's going to go up even further. If that's the case, with the pandemics going the way they are, we may feel With the pandemics going the way they are, we may fill up sooner than we think. And then we're out of the business, except to maintain what we already have, the fees that we charge for perennial care. That in itself is not a bad thing, unless we want to stay in the cemetery business and buy them all and then open another cemetery. So I, I can easily approve 50% increase tonight, one year from now the balance. And have it for residents only. I have one question about that. Suppose my dad were alive and he lived with me, he's a resident. And I had to put him in assisted living in Boca for a year, then he dies. I couldn't bury him here, even though he may have been a resident 30 years. Well, that's what I want clarified because he's now living in Boca in an assisted living place for a year or so.
Yeah, your current rules and regulations allow for that.
Okay, that's, then I have no problems with approving this. I'm going to put a motion on the floor if you'd like.
If I may, Commissioner, before you make a motion, I just want to suggest that maybe you handle the ordinance item first on first reading and take a vote on that. Since that doesn't really deal with the fees that the residents pay for. So then we could focus on the fee schedule and, and make a clear motion and direction on the fee schedule.
All right, and I make a motion that we approve the item as is.
And that's for, that's the ordinance, correct? Item number 16?
Revised and updated cemetery provisions providing for clarification, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second that motion. Okay, so just for item 16, we have a motion by Commissioner Partes, accepted by Vice Mayor Preston. We have, we'll call please.
Commissioner Drasky?
Yes.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
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 Okay, so now you're on item 17, the fee schedule.
Just to kind of get around Robin here, you know, Commissioner Drasky, are you okay with this proposal?
I am, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Houdak?
Affirmative.
Okay. Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor? Okay, so just for clarity, anyone who wants to make a motion. We're looking to pursue, remove non-residents. We're going to go with a 50% increase once this goes into effect. Second year, the other 50% going up to the rates that we agreed to, plus CPI going into effect at that point. We're going to pursue mausoleum options. And that's the changes we're proposing at this right now.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Most of my vice mayor Preston, second by Commissioner Partes, is there anything we're missing on that? Are we okay?
I just wonder if the second part of that year two, it may be more or less than 50%. I believe Commissioner Partes suggested that it be the balance of, because it may be 50% now or.
Okay. 50% now, second year is the balance of where we.
Yeah, and then I guess I should ask, you're saying 50% of what it is now or 50% of the delta between what it is now and what is proposed?
What was proposed, 50% of the new rate or what was proposed?
Does that make sense, does that work?
Yes, it, it'll, it'll be, get us 50% of the difference that we're at today, making up the difference to include the CPI in year two.
Yeah. Okay. That's the most you would like, Commissioner Partes? Our Vice Mayor Preston made a second, second by Commissioner Partes, we'll call please.
Commissioner Drasky?
Yes.
Commissioner Houdak?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
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 Okay, we are now at comments by administration and legal. I will go first, I just want to wish everyone a happy, healthy and prosperous new year and a better 2022. And I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, I do have a few, few comments for this evening. First, Broward Days is coming up, January 17th and 19th. I will, I will be in attendance along with, with staff, I believe Commissioner Houdak is going. There were two items that were brought up for discussion or for staff to investigate, and I want to just give an update on that. One was looking at bonfires in the beach, we have researched that, we're moving forward with a special event application. So we want to go ahead and test the waters on that coming up probably either late January, early February. And analyze the costs and that way we found out is that, I think it is Lake Worth, they do that as like a city sponsored special event. And so we'll go ahead and move forward and test the waters on that, see how it goes and then go ahead and plan for some, some funding of that for the following year. And then we also looked into the Clean Waterways LLC, their waterways cleaning service from the city of Fort Lauderdale. And come to find out, what we know so far is that the city of Fort Lauderdale paid $350,000, which what appears to be two months worth of work. Now, I'm not saying that that was expended within two months, it could have been like four hours a day. We don't know the particular number, but what's more important to me is to understand, one, that that was in the, and I will pronounce this wrong, Imashira Canal? Amashri, Amashri, see, I knew I would, Amashri Canal. And I understand that that's a heavily, heavily flooded canal. So looking at what, what was in that canal that may have made this technology effective. And then what do our canals look like in comparison to that? How effective was the technology in those canals? All these sorts of questions we have posed to both the vendor and the city of Fort Lauderdale. And I think over the holidays, we just really haven't got much traction on that from them. And we're still waiting on that. So at, at that price tag of $350,000, that would, at this point, expend, you know, the majority of your, your capital expense budget from a solid waste fund. But we want to get some more information and bring that back, back to you. I think that is it, except for the fact that I would like to recognize Mr. Tom Good. Mr. Good's last day with the city is today. And he is here tonight with his, with his wife to support him. I want to say that I have known Tom since the day he started. I have been impressed by what he has done, not only as the director of environmental services, but as the assistant city manager as well. When I came on board and I looked around at, you know, who could help me even in the interim as an assistant city manager. I, I found Mr. Good's professionalism experience and looked for the city to be a no brainer, in my opinion, to bring him on as the assistant city manager. And as the commission was gracious enough to give me the position, I won't say give me, but I earned the position of city manager. So did Mr. Good. And I want to say that he has been a complete, complete assistant city manager from the perspective of always doing what was in the best interest of the city with the residents and myself and the city commission in his heart. And so I am truly, truly blessed to have worked with him. I am amazed at, I think, what we have learned together along the way. And I wish him the very best in his future endeavors. On both his personal and his professional career. So I just want to thank you so much, Tom, for everything that you have done.
Oh, this is your exit interview, if you'd like to come forward.
Spin three times and clip my heels, right? I, I'm very humbled by the words, city manager. I, I do want to say too, I am from my heart grateful to have had the opportunity to serve you all, to serve the residents. Great city of Deerfield Beach. You know, things happen, like changes, you have to make adjustments. I had to make some decisions that were in the best interest for me, family and my extended family. I could tell you that this is probably one of the toughest decisions I've ever had to make when it comes to this transition. I really do enjoy this city and the decision was for several reasons. First one being just I've watched you all as a commission and staff grow in stature and credibility within this county, in Broward County. It's not just in Broward County, it's also the state incredible about it. What you all have done is, is from my eyesight incredible in terms of turning tables, getting the energy, getting, getting the commitments from some of these agencies to Deerfield. And today Deerfield is probably one of the most exciting places in all of Broward County. You can go to any city and they know Deerfield Beach is, a lot of that is because of what you all have done. Another reason why this was really tough for me is because of people here in the city. As simple as today, I, I took an opportunity to meet with, you know, the front line and, you know, the people behind the scene. You know, who really work hard to make this city function as good as it does. Because I'm going to tell you, this is a good functioning city. It's a responsive city, it does more than I've seen a lot of other big cities do. And I'm very, very proud of those people. But also with you as the commission mayor, I gotta tell you, people don't see what you do, I do, I did. The strength that you have in adversity, the people that you challenge in these agencies are multi-billion dollar agencies. To defend this city, bring a better man to this city, I've seen that. I don't think people get a chance to do that. But your strength and adversity has taught me, don't be afraid, you know, stand true and stand behind the people that you represent. Incredible. And Vice Mayor, I, I'm going to say this, I don't know anybody that loves their commission, their constituents anymore than you. Your love for people that you serve is, is, is just phenomenal. You engage them, comfort them, guide them. I mean, it's, it's, it's taught me how to be a better servant, watching you serve your people. And I know, Commissioner Drasky, you're listening, but you're, you're an incredible, hardworking elected official that I've ever known. Because I don't know if there's anybody that understands the four points of Deerfield Beach like you. You engage with all of, all of the constituents and get all the information, you make a decision, it's based on all four points of the city. And I do appreciate you and your talent for that. And, and, and I gotta say, Commissioner Partes, you know, you got a lot of stories. Anybody who listens to you, you know, you gotta listen to you a long time before you start hearing the stories a second time around. You have a very colorful life, but I gotta tell you one thing, your stories have lessons, life lessons. That I am so glad to know some of these stories because I care to share them with my children and with others. Because you've been around the block, if anybody asks you, maybe four or five times. But I, I do want you to know that this story is going to mean a lot to me. And Commissioner Houdak, I do want to tell you that from the day I met you, you're never afraid, put your hands in the work. Do what you need to do in order to be able to help the people that you serve. You're one of the very, very hard worker engaging with your, with your residents, the way that you do. And taught me how to put my hands in the mess and try to help clean it up. And I also like to say that too, the city manager as well, and gave me some very kind words. But I want you all to know that, you know, he, he's a manager, but he's more than a manager, he's a leader. Listen, this city manager, yeah, he, he does some stuff, but the most important thing that he does is he, is he is able to take a bunch of people who have a lot more knowledge than either one of us in their areas of discipline. And he's able to get them to work together collaboratively on a common goal, on a single vision, heading true north. That's a leader, that's what you have in the city manager. And Mr. Attorney, I can't leave you out. I've known Attorney Soroka for many, many years. And I'll say this, at this point in our lives, I never want to be an opposing counsel to you. You're, you have a wonderful knowledge, you're a great asset to the city. I, if I had a guest, I would say you would be here longer than Mr. Houdak. You're a tremendous asset to the city. With that, I just wish all of you, many blessings to you, many blessings to staff, many blessings to the entire city of Deerfield Beach. Thank you all again for allowing me the opportunity to work and serve the city of Deerfield Beach. Thank you very much.
When you stepped in here, we were very lucky to be a rock star, that's what we were told, we're kidding, you certainly got that. From projects jumping right into the fire with things like the, the canal project that we had over at the King Fisher. Now, in all the projects that you've tackled, one of the, one of the great things about you, your ability to speak with residents, have them understand some very complicated things. The pitfalls, the challenges and the solutions, you're always solution driven. So I just want to thank you. I know some of the tin foil hat wearing crowd is trying to say that, oh, Tom's been forced out and asked to resign. We all know that's not true and every town has their residents who choose to take on roles. And we seem to be flush with illegitimities, that happens. But I want to say you handled that tremendously through the years, Tom, you're going to be missed. And my hometown of Cooper City is lucky to get you. So thank you very much, Tom. Good to see you, thanks for sharing with us all.
That is enough for me this evening, thank you.
No more comments by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Tom, thank you very much for those kind words. You are the first person, when I was a private citizen, that I dealt with when working with the city with regards to the flooding situation on my road. And it was your professionalism that, that made me realize that working with city staff is, is something that, you know, convinced me to actually run for office. So it was your professionalism and just your, your overall service attitude that really inspired me to run for office. So I am going to miss, you know, working with you. We will, you know, see each other as, you know, colleagues now, as, you know, commissioners in separate cities. And I, I wish you well in your future endeavors. One question as I do have is for the city manager is regards to the status of the Pioneer Park Dock. I thought I was advised that we had the funding all set and that construction was going to begin in October. But here we are in January and still I, I don't see anything. So I was just curious if we've got any timeframe of when this construction is going to start and when it's going to be completed by?
Commissioner, we, we have issued that purchase order for shift and, and actually I should say the contractor, there was a change order required for that within my threshold to manage what is called the gangway, which takes you to the, the new floating dock, which was, which was unanticipated. So that change order is, that change order is underway in, in the system for processing. And then they'll be able to maintain, complete the rest of those, those purchases that are required. There's been a delay with some of the, with some of those, those purchases. There's, you know, as we know, there's many supply shortages right now. So as soon as we get that, all that information in on the change order and it gets to the system and the supplies come in, we'll be able to move forward. Actual construction is not anticipated to take very long. And, and just based on where we are in this time of year, I think it's actually, I appreciate you bringing that up. because maybe at this now, I guess a good question, you know, for the commission is knowing that we're in season right now, it may be in our best interest to wait until it dies down a little bit um in terms of the the volume over, you know, February, March, and and then knock that out, because it will uh close that close that boat ramp for for a few weeks. So um that might be something we we want to consider.
Well, I I was out there this weekend um a- and I wanna make sure it's not hazardous, because I mean, there 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 are pieces that are falling apart, there are pieces that are blocked off, uh there are pylons that are missing on the walkway. Um I mean, I we gotta get this done before somebody gets hurt, before something gets damaged.
So we will, are are you looking for input from the rest of the commission?
If 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 the trick.
Here's what I would say, this needs to be done ASAP. I don't wanna wait till we close for two weeks, that's fine, but we're we're if 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 we can't shore this up to make it be somewhat respectable out there, because I don't think it is the way it is now. If it can't be uh in in while we wait for that special two weeks, I don't think that special two weeks of downtime is really gonna happen later on, because there's the other boat ramps around uh like in Boca are closed. So this is gonna be hot for a while. We need to rip the Band-Aid off and we can get it done, get it done right as soon as possible. That's my. Anyone else wanna chime in on that and give some direction?
I've been asking for the same thing, so I appreciate your support. Is there any more direction needed on that? Are we good?
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Partas, Commissioner Frost, are you okay?
Yeah.
Uh yes, I'll be attending Broward Days at least at this point, uh um which will be from the seventeenth to the nineteenth. One of the things I really wanna focus on is these short term rentals. Uh I really wanna to make sure that that we drive that home to legislation up in Tallahassee. Uh that has been a huge challenge, especially in District One. Um two of my neighbors are are now short term rentals. So um I I feel it just as much as as a lot of the residents in District One do. Uh so that is gonna be one of my main focuses, is is just seeing what we can do uh to uh to get some some legislation uh on on the books to try to curtail this. Uh and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, um Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. If if I were to ask uh any of my colleagues or those of you in the audience, who Viola LaUzo is, did you know? If you could raise your hand. Viola LaUzo. And here's why I asked that question. Uh she was a mother of five. Uh she was from Pennsylvania, and in nineteen sixty-five, she was assassinated, murdered. And what she did was she left Pennsylvania to help fellow Americans during the civil rights struggle. She was fighting. And she went down to 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 help with that. And the reason I bring that up is that we have Martin Luther King coming up, the event. And if, you know, a lot of people don't know a lot about Dr. King, other than you hear the name. And you need to know the experience, where he was not just a uh a civil rights leader, he was a great American. Why was he great? Because he advocated what he did with nonviolence. He once told a group of people that you must be strong to walk with him. What were they referring to? Other words, you had to endure dogs biting you, people spitting on you. And if you couldn't handle that, then you couldn't walk, then you couldn't watch with them. That was the rules. And now we're gonna commemorate this man uh this month. And we need to know what we're commemorating, more than just the name. We need to understand, look at our country right now, how fractured it is along racial lines. And we would probably just, you know, pass right by, and we don't wanna talk about it too much, but it is a reality. And so I'm gonna encourage all of you, all of the city of Deerfield Beach to come out on uh the seventeenth and uh which is Martin Luther King Day, and just enjoy in the festivities. It is not for black people, it's for all of us, the residents of the city of Deerfield Beach. And it commemorates a great man that worked very hard to bring people together, unity, giving true definition to what we say that we are on a daily basis. Um the parade will start at ten AM, and it will start from St. Ambrose and and it will conclude over at Ovita. At one o'clock to one thirty, the keynote speaker will be Kelvin Hughes from Channel Ten. Uh and at one thirty, all of my colleagues uh will be speaking, and uh that will be the time for the elected officials from one from one thirty to two PM. And then from two PM to six PM, uh we're gonna have live music and there's gonna be, you know, kids activity. This is an invitation to all of the city of Deerfield Beach. Everybody, just come out and have a good time, come out and let's let's understand what that day is all about. It is a day of unity. It's not a day of discelebration to us, to uh just the man. It's what he stood for. It's what he stood for. You know how hard it is, because I came up in a time where there was segregation in this country. And by the way, segregation was by law. It was by law. But for a man to say that that is wrong, for people to beat him, there was dogs that, you know, in different cities, where the police put dogs on him, but he was an advocate of nonviolence. That's special. That's special. Okay, to see all Americans as one, to understand that we all had something in common. That is, that we believe in the belief that all people in this country can be judged by the content of their character and not the color of his skin. And that and that is great. So we have a responsibility, all of us, to carry that on and not just acknowledge the day. Okay, so please come out on the seventeenth and um have a have a have a good time. I I would like to ask um the city manager to look at setting up a testing site. We had a testing site for COVID over at uh the tennis courts over uh when it first was really bad. And it was very successful. I'd like to see that real established testing site um for uh uh COVID. And I would like for us to see about getting in contact with uh B-South Florida to see if we can do something, the city can partner with them, because I'm hearing all kinds of problems of people unable to put food on the table for their kids because of this pandemic. For us to ignore what we really are faced with is to also turn away from the reality of how we've been affected by it. So we have, we 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 have a responsibility, all of us. And uh, you know, uh I'd like to thank my colleagues uh for making that pay adjustment though I would have liked to seen a little bit more, it's going to help uh people who, you know, that that would struggle with such a tremendous increase in one year. So uh I'd like to thank you all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um District Three.
I were writing a book on the epitome of an assistant manager, you'd be the star. The reason I say that is when I came on board and I needed stuff done, rather than go to the city manager, I was kinda directed as Tom Good. Whatever I asked, whether it be speed bumps for a neighborhood, fixing the Little League fields for a national or rather a statewide tournament, you got it done. And the reason I say you were the epitome of what an assistant manager is, you let our city manager be the general of the whole city. You took all of these things off his back and got them done. And I don't know whether people said thank you or not, but I wanna take this opportunity to say thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, because you were my go-to guy to get stuff done. And I'm sure Dave appreciated the fact that you took a lot of the little grunt work off his back that people would normally bother the city manager, so that he can do his job as well as he does. So I say thank you. Now, as far as District Three is concerned, and the whole city, those of you that had Lamar Fisher as your county commissioner at Deerfield Beach no longer have it. Mark Hogan, who's working on his third term as county commissioner, is now the county commissioner for the entire city of Deerfield Beach. They re-district every so many years, and that's what he was given. You know, they say pick A, B, or C, and then they decide, no, you're getting A, whether you elected it now. And so he is now our county commissioner. I've worked with him on some projects and he gets stuff done. And I'm hoping that soon we'll invite him to the city chambers to speak as our commissioner. And that's all I have. Have a happy new year and a healthy one. And uh please keep attending meetings. We welcome you here.
District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna first jump on the Tom Good Ben wagon as well, and and rightfully so. I'm not I'm not downstairs, I'm upstairs tonight uh because of the COVID separation. Uh but if I were downstairs, I would tell Tom, you know, exactly what I told him privately during our conversation this past weekend. Uh we had a long discussion and and, you know, the private thoughts, you know, and discussions that we had will stay that way. But what I would like to say publicly is that Tom had an innate ability to deal with the residents um that I really haven't seen many other department heads have. I mean, he was able to diffuse very tense situations with the residents to understand and hear their problems and let them know that the city of Deerfield Beach not only was listening, but actually responded and and took care of their problems. And so that type of white glove touch is going to be missed. Um but more importantly, Tom brings with him, you know, over a decade's worth of institutional knowledge that which reflects in my district with respect to waste management and Mount Trashmore and the Resource Recovery Board, and then also Southwest Tenth Street. His knowledge um base on those two subjects alone uh is going to be sorely missed. Those are two areas that are very important to the city. They're going to remain on the forefront. They're going to be very contentious going forward. Uh and to lose that institutional knowledge uh basically cannot be replaced, because it's decades worth of knowledge that he has. And it and it will be missed. Uh I I know he's only a phone call away, but it's not going to, it won't be the same um without without Tom. So I I I know why he's doing this, and I certainly encourage people to do things that are in their own best interest. And I wish him uh and Patty and their kids nothing but the best going forward. They have been not just colleagues to work with, but also friends, uh and I expect it to be that way going forward. So Tom, um congratulations, you know, moving forward. Don't forget about us, because we certainly won't forget about you. Um it's kinda downhill after that, but uh I do wanna announce that this Saturday, January eighth, uh is the Constitution Park cleanup from nine AM to noon. So if your kids need service hours, or if you just wanna come out and make Constitution a more beautiful place than it already is and help uh clean up, that is from this Saturday from nine AM to noon. Uh we we've danced around it a little bit today, but you know, we haven't really said it directly. The third item that I have is, you know, the Florida Legislative Session begins um very shortly. And and that's why Broward Days that, you know, we've talked about a couple of times is coming up is because the Florida Legislate Legislative Session begins. And I commend Commissioner Hudak for keeping an eye on the short term rentals, which greatly impacts the city of Deerfield Beach. You know, but as we've known from years past, there's issues that can come up on moments' notice. The bills that are filed now, yes, we're aware of them, but the legislature can also bring things up at the last minute on the last day of the session. So it's something to keep an eye on. Uh I I know we have staff that that's their sole responsibility is to keep an eye on what's going with the legislator Legislative Session and the bills that are being contemplated and passed and not passed. Um but this year, like any other year, deserves a a keen eye on what's going on in Tallahassee, only because they are stewards of our money as well, like the residents of Deerfield Beach. Keep a keen eye on us. It's our responsibility to keep a keen eye on the state legislature as as well. And and I know me and my colleagues will do that going forward, but that that begins soon. And I encourage the residents to also likewise reach out to your state representatives, um because we as city commissioners have only so much influence on the on the state. But when they hear from you, uh it seems to go a long way. So please stay engaged in the process. Uh it's government at work. And so you need to stay engaged and and find out what the state is gonna be doing moving moving forward. And and lastly, I also would like to wish not only uh the city manager and the city attorney, but my colleagues and all the residents, you know, a happy new year. Uh I I've heard a lot of the news about all the all the negatives that are out there, that there's, you know, the the rise in COVID. There's inflation, there's this, there's that. Um but I'd like to take a different approach to it and think of it as, you know, this new year is three hundred and sixty-five new opportunities that we have, three hundred and sixty-five opportunities that we didn't have before. And let's not squander those going forward. We have an opportunity to make a great city even even better. And I said it last year, that I have a an agenda that I would like the city to pursue, more P-three opportunities. The uh Four Corners area of of my district, the Dixie Corridor, there are very key aspects. Southwest Tenth Street, I could go on um for a while now. But these are key core projects that are going to affect our city long after all of us on the dais are out of office. This is going to be for future commissions to handle, and these are seeds that we can start planting now. And I challenge myself, I challenge staff, and I challenge my colleagues to keep the pressure on, keep the pedal down moving forward. I mean, every day is a new opportunity, and let's not squander one of those opportunities going forward. The citizens demand it, and we owe it to them going forward. And so I think if we work together like we have in the past years, I think twenty twenty-two two could be a very special year. Uh I'm looking forward to it. I know the city manager and staff are working on it. Uh I know my colleagues have great ideas as well. And so just think of it not as what bad things are to come, but what good things are coming and how we can make that happen. And with that, I'm gonna stop and leave it to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm not gonna mention Tom anymore. I'm done with him. Uh uh honestly, there are some other issues I do I do wanna touch on. Um, you know, we have major issues still over at Praxis. Uh we I've gotten two, three different calls this week um about lack of maintenance, the conditions that are over there. I know we have COVID forces looking into it, but I think we need to look, we know what these people are as far as the landlords that are there. They came before us, they lied to us, they tried to get in. We were, you know, we had a choice between allowing to to become involved with HUD or shutting it out completely and keeping those people on the streets. Quite frankly, I look back at that decision that regret me, because we deal with some underhanded people who I think are nothing but slum lords. I think we need to do what we can, have HUD pull their funding out of it, let those people go back to Vegas, Pennsylvania, or where the hell they're from, or uh someplace much further south, a lot warmer as far as I'm concerned. And um and and let them go there, and we will find these residents to replace. This is a slum uh a slum setting that shouldn't be like that, because people are generous who are, you know, add it. So uh that's what I would like to say before, if I can use some stronger language, certainly, but um but but it it this is not the way people should be lived, should be treated. Um and we do it because they lied to us, front of us. You knew it right then. So um this is what happens when we deal with people like that. Um I do have a question about MLK. Um one of the things we have is a parade that's in here. My understanding is that parade route goes from St. Ambrose Church uh all the way to Ovita and Keaton Park. I don't understand the parade route. Um we're shutting down federal highway. And the whole point of the parade is have residents involved, if you can get involved. But from St. Ambrose to really, as you make a left onto Hillsboro, um there are no residents that are gonna be there. We've done this before, we've seen other parades. We might have five. We've done this before, we've seen other parades. We might have five people there. So, we're shutting down a major artery to do this parade. And yet, we're not, it's not impacting residents. It's not allowing them the opportunity to participate. It's really just a bunch of businesses that are there. So, you know, having gone this route before, I've never seen people line up on the streets there. Even if they did, we couldn't reach them. If you think about where the path would go, we're heading north, we're making a left. We might get residents on the west side of Federal, but we're not going to be able to throw candy to them and do anything. If anything, it's all businesses. I remember a few of the businesses came out, but that's it. And so, it's really, it's almost like a dead parade for 25% of this parade route. So, I don't understand it. I could even make a case of why we're going to do it even along Hillsborough because if we go from maybe to Women's Club, maybe we started the route at Women's Club and went that way. I do know residents come out because it is more popular along the library and on the south there, that we have residents come out for all of our parades that we do. It's still not a lot, really not a lot. The heart of it is when we get further over and we get kind of past the old czar market. Where I have seen a lot of people engage and get involved is if you remember the one year where we walked from Ovita and we walked down from Ovita and Keefe Park to do a day of service when we work on the Pastor Ford Park. We all walked down MLK, you have residential that's right there, people came out, walked with us and came over. So, at least, whether they participated or not, they at least engaged. And I think we're taking a big portion of where this parade is going. And we don't even give an opportunity for residents to engage because it's not logistically, it doesn't work. Personally, I think the parade should start somewhere around Pastor Ford's church and move up to Ovita, or start at the Women's Club, so we can capture all those residents along there. But going from St. Ambrose doesn't make sense to me. So, I just disagree with the parade route, wholeheartedly on that. So, I don't know what can be done, or maybe can be done, but I just, I think we're missing the mark on that. We talked about what's happening up in Tallahassee, and I spoke to a reporter today from Sunset who's asking mayors in beach cities about a potential bill that's being passed around up there about no smoking on beaches. I think Sarasota is a threat, that some of the representative Sarasota is bringing that forward. And what it would essentially do is not sit in front of advanced smoking beaches, but it would actually go in reverse of what we've seen taken away from us, is give us some home rule and allow cities to make those decisions themselves. I know, sitting up here a long time, this has popped up many times. You know, we have no smoking sections on the beach, can we do different things? We know we do our beach cleanups, the impact that we see from cigarettes, from all the cigarette musts run down the lane, what we pick up when we do those things. And it's interesting to see what happens with that. Because if the state allows cities and gives them home rule to make a decision on that, maybe that opens up the door for other things like vacation rentals, all this stuff. We feel that, you know, it's a mistake by the state of Florida, blanket law or ordinance or policy that affects, you know, the entire state, when it can't be applied the same in different areas. You know, we're densely populated, we have a very unique area. We're extremely different than if you were to go over to, you know, the Gold Coast further north, where it's not as populated. It's very different. So, you know, to have a blanket law in place that you think is helping everybody, it's not. Most of the time, it's hurting a lot of people. So, giving the cities the ability to make rules, the benefits to residents, is what should be happening. So, it'd be very curious how it's that. I am extremely frustrated and disappointed yet again with our beach enforcement by no talking to the City Manager and Chief. I shouldn't be seeing pictures on social media, people's dogs on the beach. I shouldn't be seeing people riding bikes all over our boardwalk, electric bikes, things like that. I've talked to the chief and the City Manager. I'm hoping to see some improvements, but it needs to happen. It needs to happen fast. I know there's been some efforts on the COVID testing site, but I really appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing that up. You know, it's something that I know we were looking at doing and trying to have happen in our city. And the best place to do it is by Waters Park. The problem was because of the Renaissance Festival, it couldn't happen. But I know there's got to be some other options, so it's a point that's made, but let's see what we can find out. And it will be on a smaller scale than what it could be, just because of what kind of space. Certainly, something needs to be done because I, we look at the families a lot of this, so that. Other than that, I believe that is all that I have. I want to wish everybody a happy New Year, looking forward to, hopefully, all of this craziness passing. With that, looking for motion to adjourn. My show will second motion adjourn all in favor, say aye.
Aye.